Good evening. Welcome to everybody that came out. Thank you for coming out tonight. We're going to call the meeting to order.
Boy.
Is he's on? Okay, so we're going to call the meeting to order. Closed session report.
Yes, good evening. In closed session, the City Council authorized the City Attorney's Office to join a pending writ of mandate and a complaint for declaratory and injunctive relief against the State of California and Robert Bonta in his official capacity as California Attorney General by a vote of 4-0 with one council member being absent. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Chief Shorts, would you mind leaving us in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Chief. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Protam Judge?
Here.
Mayor Thomas is absent this evening.
Are there any items on the agenda review?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Any declarations of conflict tonight? If any member of the City Council -- do I have to read that part? If any member of the City Council may have conflict of interest or any reason, why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on the agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Seeing none, moving on.
Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1. Presentation of a proclamation declaring the month of April 2023 as Financial Literacy Month, and Community Services Coordinator Kristin Tignak is here to present this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protam Judge and members of the City Council. The month of April is recognized as Financial Literacy Month. To accept the proclamation, I would like to invite the following to come forward. Author of "A Teen's Guide to Investing: How to Make Magic of Compounding Work for You", Chair of our YES Advisory Board's Financial Literacy Workshop Series Committee, and a junior at Santa Susana High School, Shriya Jhulakati. Sorry. And YES Board members Anthony Angelini, Executive aide for Senator Scott Wilk, State Senator, sorry, John Tolson, Director of Membership with the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce.
Congratulations.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas National Financial Literacy Month is recognized each year in April to raise public awareness of the importance of financial literacy and maintaining smart money management habits. And whereas 64% of American adults report that money is a significant stressor in their life. And whereas, the more the community is aware of current levels of financial literacy, the better we can prepare future generations to manage their money as it plays an important role in the quality of our lives. And whereas, 75% of American teens report having a lack of confidence in their knowledge of personal finance. And whereas, the Simi Valley community is working to increase financial literacy among its teens and young adults by such programs as the Youth Employment Services Let's Talk Money Financial Literacy Workshop Series to share knowledge of the basics of budgeting, savings, building credit, investing to prepare for future financial obligations and retirement. And whereas, the goal of Financial Literacy Month is to encourage community members to challenge themselves to increase their knowledge of effective money management and to practice, sorry, healthy budgeting and saving habits to reduce unnecessary stress, and it is key to achieving financial stability. Now therefore, the month of April 2023 is hereby proclaimed Financial Literacy Month in the City of Simi Valley to increase awareness of the importance of financial literacy education, presented this third day of April 2023."
Thank you very much, Kristin. Okay, here you go.
Well, good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for having us. And on behalf of the Youth Employment Service Board, thank you for declaring April as Financial Literacy Month. The YES Board made financial literacy and education one of our priorities and one of our workforce priorities this legislative year. And so I could tell you all about it, but I think a perfect representative is Shriya here, and she's going to tell you about our workshops that we're planning and everything that we're going to be doing. So we're really excited. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll be kicking off our first of our four-part series with a Banking Basics workshop on Saturday, April 22nd, at 11:30 a.m., which is during the YES Job and Career Fair. The next workshop will be Thursday, April 27th, called Climbing the Economic Ladder, and it will cover budgeting and saving for emergency funds, and it will be held from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Simi Valley Library. The next workshop is on Thursday, May 18th, and it's titled Invest in Yourself, and it will cover intro to the stock market and investing, and it will also be held from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Simi Valley Library. The last workshop is on Thursday, May 25th, and it's called Invest in Your Future, and it will cover building healthy credit and saving for retirement from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Simi Valley Library.
To reserve your free spot and to learn more about the workshops, go to bit.ly/simitalkmoney. These workshops will be held in a hybrid format, though we strongly encourage attending in person, and we'll have door prizes and swag items to give out.
Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item 1D2. Presentation of a proclamation declaring the month of April 2023 as Donate Life Month, and Councilmember Rhodes will present this item.
Thank you. It's my great honor to present this proclamation today. It's very personal. I would like to invite Steve Weed to come forward to accept the proclamation. It reads as follows: "Whereas, organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And whereas, more than 100,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 20,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas, the need is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities, a single individual's donation of heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others. And whereas, organ donors saved more than 42,000 lives last year, the most ever, and any person can register regardless of age or medical condition, sign up with Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure your wishes to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor are honored. And whereas, California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, the month of April 2023 is hereby proclaimed DMV Donate Life California Month in the City of Simi Valley to encourage its citizens to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org or donavidaCalifornia.org, presented this third day of April 2023."
Would you like to?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Emphasis on the few. My name's Steve Weed. I live in Oakview. I came all the way here because I've had some connections with Simi Valley residents, including Mr. Rhodes, and I know that you really support this. I'm just going to say a couple of words about my story. It's not that my story is unique or not, but I had kidney disease when I was three years old, and for the most part, didn't have any problems. I love to show this picture because when people see that, they say, "Woo, you ran a marathon?" But I ran a marathon with 50% of my kidney function. And like a lot of diseases that possibly would require a transplant, a lot of times you don't know if you don't check, and that's one of the reasons why so many people get to this stage. So, you know, as Rocky said, in California alone, there's 20,000 people waiting for organs. For those of you that are involved in churches or civic groups, I would encourage you not only to get the message out, but also to consider possibly having an educational event in your community. If I said nothing else, thank you would be sufficient. Thank you for making this visible, Rocky, and the rest of the council.
And just a side note, that is for registering for being a donor after you pass. I would highly encourage anyone to consider being a living donor. And it's personal to me because I have a friend here in the audience, and Tony, I'm glad that you're here.
I know Rocky won't take the credit, but Mr. Rocky Rhodes donated a kidney to Tony Fallato, and so they've become very close friends and two wonderful people in our community. So thank you both.
Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 1D3. Presentation of a proclamation declaring the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month, and Senior Management Analyst Julia Ramirez is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the City Council. With us tonight, we have Madeline McCormick from the Housing Rights Center. She is here to receive a proclamation declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month. Can Ms. McCormick please come forward? The Fair Housing Proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas the City of Simi Valley is dedicated to providing all of its residents equal housing opportunities through the elimination of housing discrimination. And whereas, April is the 55th anniversary of the enactment of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. And whereas, this Fair Housing Act forms a national policy of nondiscrimination in the sale, rental, or negotiation for sale or rental of dwellings based on race, color, religion, gender, national origin, familial status, or disability. And whereas, the State of California's Fair Employment and Housing Act and the Unruled Civil Rights Act also protect California residents from housing discrimination based on age, ancestry, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, genetic information, source of income, military or veteran status, and other arbitrary basis. And whereas, through a contract with the city, the Housing Rights Center provides a fair housing program to investigate and remedy illegal housing discrimination and counsel and educate housing consumers and providers alike. Whereas, despite existing legislation, discrimination in housing continues to be a nationwide problem, necessitating vigorous education and enforcement efforts by the Housing Rights Center, with the City of Simi Valley being an active partner in those efforts. Now and therefore, the month of April 2023 is hereby proclaimed Fair Housing Month in the City of Simi Valley to encourage all citizens and civic organizations to continue to support the principles of the Fair Housing Act, presented this third day of April 2023."
Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 1D4. Presentation of a proclamation declaring the month of April 2023 as Earthquake Preparedness Month, and Emergency Services Coordinator Rachel Myers is here to present this item to the disaster service workers.
Disaster service workers to accept the proclamation, Ed Baker, Phil Akram, Daryl Clark, and Jorge Curiel. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Simi Valley residents have witnessed earthquakes that have resulted in property damage, injuries and loss of life, and significant financial impacts. And whereas, as many as 10,000 earthquakes occur each year in California, and mitigation measures can save lives and speed the return to normalcy. And whereas, California is the first state in the nation to offer free, cutting-edge technology designed to alert Californians before shaking begins through the Earthquake Warning California System, including the My Shake app, Android earthquake alerts, and wireless emergency alerts. And whereas, Simi Valley residents and employees are encouraged to participate in the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, training to build their resiliency skills to better protect themselves and help their neighbors during an earthquake and/or other crisis. And whereas, households and businesses are encouraged to visit ready.gov to create emergency plans and kits, which include medicines, pet food, and comfort items in order to be prepared in the event of a disaster, and to visit 5:30 a.m. for emergency updates. Now therefore, the month of April 2023 is hereby proclaimed Earthquake Preparedness Month in the City of Simi Valley to encourage its residents to be prepared in the event of an earthquake and to help build a resilient community, presented this third day of April 2023."
Hi, I'm Phil Ankrum. We just finished a CERT class. You just missed it. We'll have a new one next fall. I encourage you to sign up for it. It's free training by the Ventura County Fire Department, and they teach you how to take care of yourself. If you can't take care of yourself, how are you going to take care of your family members? Do it.
This is also a good time to remind people at home, if you're watching on TV, that we always need to be prepared for the next earthquake. Should have at least a minimum of 72 hours food and water on hand at your home. So make sure you get that done. That's the most important thing. Have that ready.
Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 1D5. Presentation of Certificates of Commendation to the Grace Brethren Robotics Team 986A in recognition, California Region 4, VEX Robotics Competition High School Regional Championship, AMAEZ Award, and Management Analyst Heidi DiNardo is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Protam Judge and council members. Tonight, we recognize Grace Brethren's Competition Robotics Team 986A. Competing on Saturday, March 4th, in the 2023 California Region 4 VEX Robotics Competition High School Regional Championship in Los Angeles, Team 986A took home the AMAEZ Award and earned a spot to compete in the 2023 VEX Robotics World Championship hosted in Dallas, Texas, from April 24th to 27th, where they will compete with 800 of the best high school teams from all around the world. The AMAEZ Award recognizes a consistently high-performing and competitive robot. Key criteria of the AMAEZ Award are: Robot consistently contributes to high-scoring matches with their alliance partner. Robot performs at a high level in driver skills and programming skills at the event. Robot is designed and constructed to consistently execute an effective game strategy. Robot programming is effective and consistently successful. Students understand and explain how they work together to develop their robot design, and team interview demonstrates effective communication skills, teamwork, professionalism, and a student-centered ethos. This is indeed an amazing feat, as they are the only team in Ventura County to make it to the Worlds, and this is the 14th consecutive year in which Grace Robotics has sent a team to the VEX World Championships. Amazing. Please come forward when I call your name so we may celebrate you and your team's accomplishment. Team captain, programmer, CAD designer, strategist, coach, scout, online challenge lead, backup driver, and this year's Simi Valley Youth Council Sergeant-at-Arms, Ian Nelson. Main driver and builder, Owen Zahn. CAD designer, engineering notebook lead, online challenge lead, and scout, Peter Wang. Head builder and coach, Kyle Zahn. Builder and coach, Dante Swice. And then we have robotics faculty advisor, Jake Mattel. Robotics organizational mentor, Bill Shem. Robotics strategic mentor, Cicely Nelson. And robotics logistics mentor, Chris Zahn.
Well, congratulations to all of you. That's an outstanding achievement. You've made us proud here in Simi Valley, and thank you for doing all you do. Somebody want to talk about what this is?
We'd love to. So because I want to talk about so much, I'd rather have Owen Zahn do it, so here you go.
Okay. So this season's game, as you can see here, we have these type of discs, and you score them. It's kind of like frisbee golf. So you score them in a top goal, and we've used this season a type of catapult And we've used this season a type of catapult design that scores three of the discs at the same time. And as you've found out, we've been quite successful this season as we've competed and gotten awards at all of our regional competitions, done well enough at state that we even made it to Worlds, and we're super happy about that. And I'd like to thank all the City Council members for allowing us to come up here and kind of spread this, but also giving us these awards. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Would the rest of the council like to come down and get in the picture?
So, yeah, Owen, you can try shooting it. It's going to be a little scary. This thing is not like supposed to be tested unless it's on a field, but it's fine. Normally, in a game, you're going to be kind of like a sport. You're having four of these robots on a field, kind of playing frisbee golf. So this is a catapult. Whether it shoots or not, we haven't tested in like a week because we've been changing things. But normally, you can just shoot, let's just do one. Very basic. But this thing is moving at like 360 RPM. It's like a little car essentially, moving really fast across a, let's say, it's a 36 by 36 inch, no, it's 6 by 6. It's a very big, it's a decent-sized field. There's also these intakes back here. Turn on the rollers if you can. You can pick up discs using the back right here, and you're able to then load it into your catapult. We have 200 PSI tanks on this thing that can make it shoot further if we want. The reason why we won't turn it on is kind of obvious. We're in a closed building with people around, and we don't want it to implode on people. So, yeah. Thank you so much. It really means a lot. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Mike Judge, and the rest of the council.
Thank you.
Let's make sure the machine's off.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item 1D6. Presentation of Certificate of Appreciation to Outgoing Commissioner of the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. And Associate Planner Eric Chen is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, and members of the City Council. This evening, we are recognizing Marcus Crutchfield, who recently concluded his service on the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. Through citywide competitive recruitment process, the City Council appointed Mr. Crutchfield to the Board of Commissioners representing the city of Simi Valley on March 14th, 2016, to fill a partial term, followed by an appointment to a four-year term in 2017, and another reappointment in 2021. During his seven-year tenure, Mr. Crutchfield was entrusted with policymaking, allocation of public funds, and general oversight responsibilities in the creation and protection of fertile and workforce housing for our residents. Unfortunately, Mr. Crutchfield is not in attendance tonight, but will receive his certificate of appreciation from the city by mail in acknowledgement of the time and leadership he has contributed to our community.
Thank you. I just want to thank Marcus for his service. He's a great guy and did a great job. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, we have no speakers for item 2. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item 3A1, Adoption of a Resolution for the Appointment of One Commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County Board of Commissioners. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution Number 2023-14, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Appointing a Commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners to fill an unscheduled vacancy with the term ending September 30th, 2025. And Associate Planner Eric Chen will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, and members of the City Council. The Area Housing Authority represents seven jurisdictions in Ventura County, including Simi Valley. It is governed by a Board of Commissioners appointed by the jurisdiction that serves. One of the city's two commissioners recently resigned, resulting in an unscheduled vacancy. At a March 6th City Council meeting, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, and Councilmember Lister were appointed by the City Council to conduct interviews and nominate a prospective Commissioner for appointment. However, a scheduling conflict was identified for Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, and City Councilmember Kavanaugh volunteered to serve on his behalf. On March 15th, 13 applicants were interviewed, and Joseph J. Pachowski was nominated for appointment. Therefore, it is recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution appointing Joseph J. Pachowski to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. This concludes the presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you.
I would just like to comment that all were outstanding candidates, and Councilmember Kavanaugh and I had a very difficult task, I will say. But it tells us that our city is in good hands. And certainly, we know, in the discussion, we appreciated what Mr. Pachowski had to offer and what he's done for our community and what his vision for our Area Housing Authority and oversight. And so I think that I would like to go ahead and make the motion to appoint, unless there's further commentary. So I'd like to adopt Resolution Number 2023-14, Appointing Joseph J. Pachowski to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners to fill an unscheduled vacancy with a term commencing immediately and ending September 30th, excuse me, 2025.
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Let me have Mr. Pachowski come up.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3A2. Selection of One City Council Member to Serve on a Selection Committee with a Continuing Arts Commissioner to Interview and Nominate Perspective Simi Valley Arts Commissioners. And Deputy Community Services Director Anna Medina is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, and members of the City Council. On June 30th, 2023, the Terms of Service for Two Members of the Simi Valley Arts Commission will conclude. The Arts Commission is responsible for reviewing the annual, financial, and operational plans for the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center prior to City Council approval. It also reviews recommendations for capital purchases, grants, and other opportunities that would make the arts accessible for all members of the community. Membership on the commission is comprised of two City Council Members, four City Council-appointed public members, and one alternate member, as well as one Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center Foundation Board Representative. All public members serve staggered two-year terms. Staff initiated a recruitment on February 20th, 2023, to fill these upcoming vacancies. Recruitment efforts included a press release, cable television, public service announcements, shares on social media, and postings on the city's website. A total of two applications were received. It is estimated that approximately a half hour will be needed to conduct the interviews. Staff is recommending that the City Council select one City Council Member to serve on a selection committee with a Continuing Arts Commissioner to interview and nominate applicants to serve on the Arts Commission for appointment by the City Council. Mayor Pro Tem, Judge last served in this capacity on May 17th, 2022. This concludes the report, and I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions of staff? No? Any volunteers?
So here comes question for staff that we didn't ask. If two of us are already on the Arts Commission, should we be involved in that interview process? Is there appropriateness or what?
You can be, yes.
Either one of us, I'm sure, would be happy to serve. What are your thoughts, Smackey?
If it's soon, I'm going to be traveling in like the next week, so.
I would be happy to volunteer if that's the discussion.
Okay, I move to nominate Councilmember Lister to serve on the selection committee with a Continuing Arts Commissioner to interview and nominate prospective Simi Valley Arts Commissioners for the upcoming vacancies.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 13B1. Presentation by Kelly Brown, Community Information Officer of Interface Children and Family Services on their 211 Department and Services. And City Manager Gabriel will present this item.
Just a quick introduction. Interface Family Services has been around for a number of years, based out of Camrio, and provide wonderful services to the Ventura County community, including the Simi Valley community. One of the most important things they do is provide 211 service, which is indispensable in Ventura County. And they took that over, I'm trying to guess, 2001, 2003? Okay, I was close, 2005. So welcome to have Kelly Brown here to present what 211 is all about.
13 years now. And Eric Sternad, my boss, always does Simi Valley because he lives down the street, but he was not available this time, so I got to come to this one. I'm excited to be here. In addition to the 211 program, Interface has several other programs. We are celebrating our 50th anniversary as an agency in Ventura County this year. And as you can see, we do several other types of community-focused work. Domestic violence, human trafficking, and youth shelters being some of the main programs that we have. We do mental health and trauma treatment, and also justice services for those reentering society after coming back from incarceration. So 211, we are a 24/7 information and referral hotline. People can dial 211 on their phone, and they can be connected to one of our 35 community-based specialists. And what they do, they're working from home at this time, but what they do is they talk to the caller, and they ask them, hey, what's going on with you today? What is it that you're not able to figure out how to get through? It could be anything from, I don't have food to feed my kids tonight. I have been evicted from my housing, and we're staying in my car, and we're wanting to know what kind of services are available. Or even during a disaster, they might be looking for whether or not their house is in an evacuation area, and they don't have access to the internet to look that up themselves, and we would look it up for them. You can call us, you can text us your zip code, and the same person who would have answered the phone would actually talk to you via text message. It's a live agent. You just text your zip to 898211, and somebody will talk to you about what's happening for you right now and connect you to over 30,000 different resources we have in our database. We have a database management team that manages those and is every year at least one time, but usually multiple times, making sure that we have the most up-to-date information about how those services are serving our county. Could be local, state, or national resources. Simi Valley in particular, in the last year, we've received about 2,000 calls, and the top calls being for housing assistance, income support and assistance, mental health care, and also substance abuse disorder treatment. Those are the three top requests that people are calling to 211 for. As you can see, about 19% of the callers that we talked to are either currently homeless or at risk of being homeless within the next 14 days. 170 of those had children 0 to 5 in the household, and 48 of those were pregnant at the time we were talking to them. The stats here, comparing to the rest of the county, the only thing that's a little bit different than how the rest of the county ranks is that housing is a little bit higher percentage. But housing is always number one, except for during 2021, during COVID-19 referrals, where it was knocked to number two. But what's different here is that food and meals would have been above individual family community support if we were looking at the county-wide stats. In addition to information and referral calls, we do have a few different special projects. One of those being the VIDA program that we partner with the United Way on, where community members who make under, I believe, $65,000 a year are able to get their taxes done, but for free. And these are volunteer tax preparers who generally are retired, either working for the IRS or have their own tax business and have their own free time. They come every year, and we have several different locations around the county where people can bring their tax forms and get their taxes done for free. Every year, the United Way and 211 help to get millions of dollars in tax returns brought to this county without people having to pay a very high tax prepare fee. And I know that personally, from getting my taxes done, that it can be quite a burden. Also, we partner with the California Department of Public Health, and it's an interesting program that we started two years ago. I want to be honest and say that I didn't have a lot of hope that it was going to be super successful. And basically, what we do is we ask every 211 caller if they use tobacco, or anyone in their house does, and if they're interested in not using tobacco any longer, if they want to stop. It has been very successful. Over the last two years, we have referred 30,000 people to get free tobacco cessation counseling, and they have a 70% rate of success in helping people to stop smoking. So we're super excited about that program and definitely pleasantly surprised in the success of that. The Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program is something that we do in partnership with Southern California Edison and also PG&E for people who are covered by PG&E and some of the other counties that we serve. And between those two utility companies, what we started was, we have a whole care coordination team that year-round is connecting with community members that have a household member that has access or functional needs and is not able to stay safe and healthy in their house with no power. So if they're electricity-dependent, we work year-round to get them connected to resources that can help them to stay in their home safe or healthy, or to build a plan if that's just not possible, and once power goes out, they need to figure out what to do. We build a safety plan for them to help them get out. One story I have from over Thanksgiving, I'm sure you guys have not forgotten that recently, over Thanksgiving, you had no power here in Simi Valley. And one of your residents, we were talking to her about 10:00 p.m. I was talking to her myself, and one of my managers was as well. We were trying to convince her to go to a hotel because she did use a medical device, but she didn't want to do that. So what we ended up doing was DoorDash sending her some hot meals, and we also sent her an ice chest where she could keep her medication that needed to stay cold. We sent her an ice chest with ice in it. And the DoorDash driver, who is a local person here in Simi Valley, was really great because she was in an apartment upstairs, gated community. She couldn't get down the stairs to get to him, and he went out of his way to get that stuff to her. And we really appreciated his extra help. The other thing that I have up here is our 211 Ride Program. We partner with Ventura County Transportation Commission, who I think might be here on the agenda tonight, to provide transportation information to community members needing to do trip planning. We did find about five years ago when we were working with VCTC to decide if we needed to partner on this, we did a survey and found that 30% of our callers don't have transportation to get to the places we're referring them to and had no idea how they were going to get there. And so once we realized, hey, there's a problem, we came up with a way that we created a trip planner that's online, and also our agents, when we're talking to people, are able to help them plan how they're going to get to the resources we're referring them to. As you know, during disasters, 211 plays an important role. While you have, the Office of Emergency Services opens up an amazing hotline where they have information on lifesaving information about if you need to be rescued from your home, or where the evacuation area- from your home, or where the evacuation area is. There's also the Ventura County VC Emergency Site as well, but 211 steps in and helps out by taking some of the calls that are not life-threatening, letting people that are not able to look their own address up, give us their address so we can tell them if they are in an evacuation area, giving them direction to emergency shelters, and we also staff the intake desk at those local assistance centers that pop up during major disasters. I think I remembered everything without looking at my notes, but that's what we look like. Most of us are working from home now, but we are transitioning back into office, which I might be the only person excited about, because I always went to the office and it's lonely there, but everybody's starting to slowly transition back in. So that's the team that's not super excited about having to come back into the office soon. And that's my presentation.
Thank you very much. I just have one quick question for you. During a public safety shutdown of the electricity, are citizens able to dial 211 and get information, like if they hear it on their, get an alert on their phone, and you can tell them if they're in an area that's going to be shut down?
Absolutely, yes. Uh-huh.
Thank you. Elaine?
A quick question for you, thank you, and thank you for your presentation. You mentioned that, you talked about other counties that you serve, so obviously there are multiple areas that you're serving. If someone were to call, are they getting specific information for Ventura County, or is it even more original than that?
It is specific information for Ventura County, but we do serve every county from Ventura County all the way up the coast, through the Bay Area, and even Northern California as well. So if somebody's calling in, and they're kind of on the border of, say, Ventura, Santa Barbara, we're able to help them to look at services that are, can span between both counties, but we know as somebody's calling in exactly where they're calling from, so we know which county they're seeking resources in. Sometimes people will be calling from here in Simi Valley, but they're trying to help their sister in San Luis Obispo or something like that, and we're able to do that as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Rocky?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm ashamed to say I didn't know about the services. I knew it was out there, but the depth and breadth that's available is pretty amazing, and I'm grateful for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
DeeDee?
I just want to say thank you, because I was asking for the 211 Blue Book paper thing, that hasn't been around in how many years? So the city manager was laughing at me, so this was very informative, thank you. I knew some of the stuff you did, but you also covered areas that I also did not have an idea that you covered, and being able to help somebody in another county, like if I'm calling for somebody, that's a wonderful tool, so thank you very much for sharing that.
Thank you very much for a great presentation.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, and members of the City Council.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is item 3B2, presentation by Ventura County Transportation Commission on the Draft Transit Integration and Efficiency Study, and Ben Gonzalez is here to present this item.
All right, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, and members of the City Council. Today's presentation will be about Ventura County Transportation Commission's Transit Integration and Efficiency Study, or TIES for short. I would like to introduce VCTC's Executive Director, Martin Erickson, who will present the TIES presentation. Martin?
Thank you, Ben, and good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, members of the Simi Valley City Council. It's always exciting to be back in Simi Valley, such a vibrant and beautiful city, and so many good things going on. I am here tonight, as Ben noted, to provide you with an update on the Transit Integration and Efficiency Study. Many of you are familiar with VCTC, as was noted in the last presentation, we have a lot of partnerships with, with many agencies. We are the county's transportation commission, and as such, our board is a 17-member board that represents each of Ventura County's 10 cities, the five county supervisors, as well as two public members. I really think of us more as a mobility organization. We are, we help Ventura County keep moving, whether that's on a bus, in a car, on a bike. I couldn't help but share our hot-off-the-press Biking in Ventura County guide with you. It's not a presentation tonight, but on pages 10 and 11, it showcases Simi Valley's bikeways, so please take a look at that also. You, you as a city are very ably represented by Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, on the commission, and he has been on the commission for several years, and I think the commission is unique in that while it's a 17-member board representing all 10 cities and the county, more often than not, they find a regional solution to a lot of the often challenging problems that regional transportation entails. One of those challenges is public transit, how best we allow it to operate throughout the county, whether it's paratransit, specialized services for seniors or disabled, commuter bus transit, getting people from one end of the county to the other, or just transit trips that occur within each city. So a few years ago, the commission asked VCTC to embark on a Transit Integration Efficiency Study, the TIES study, yes, one more acronym, but it did tie together well, pardon the pun. It was initiated in the summer of 2020, and it was initiated before the pandemic began in earnest, so I just want to frame for you how much the pandemic has affected public transit, not just in Ventura County, but throughout the whole country and throughout the whole world. Once the pandemic started, transit ridership fell precipitously, in some cases up to 85 or 90% on some systems. Transit workers, especially bus drivers, were at the front lines of the pandemic throughout the entire time, transporting people, transporting people to their jobs, transporting them to, to medical appointments, and, and they did that throughout the pandemic. We, at VCTC, worked very closely with all the public transit operators in the county to ensure that safety was, was a paramount concern, safety of passengers, safety of drivers, safety of the transit personnel. But ridership nationally, again, fell precipitously, but even before the pandemic, transit ridership in California especially, was certainly not meeting the very ambitious goals that the state of California had set for reduction of greenhouse gases and reduction of congestion. So in, in that sense, the challenges facing transit have only increased. Costs have, have gone up. Congestion, while automobile congestion or VMT, while initially fell very dramatically at the beginning of the pandemic, VMT or vehicle miles travels has actually come back to pre-pandemic levels. Now, pattern, patterns have changed, but again, automobile or VMT usage has, has again come back to actually surpass pre-pandemic levels, but public transit has still not reached the pre-pandemic levels. In many cases, it's, like in ours, we're going up each, I think we're recovering well, but it's still not quite at 60%, and I think that's fairly common for most, most operators in the county. A little over 10 years ago, a similar study was done, looking at how transit could be reconfigured, possibly consolidated, and some important changes came out of that study. One of them was the formation of the Gold Coast Transit District in the West County, a distinct transit district that provides transit service for all the West County cities, Oxnard, Ventura, Port Wineemi, Ojai, and the unincorporated areas there, and also the creation of the, of ECTA, or the East County Transit Alliance, to provide better paratransit services. This study again began in 2021. It involved working with all the different transit operators in Ventura County. Simi Valley, as you know, you have your own transit system for your city, so does Thousand Oaks, so does Moore Park, so does Camarillo, and then there are the other regional operators, VCTC being one of them, the big blue buses you see, those provide a, an inter, kind of inter-county connection, and focus groups were held, outreach was done, and really, again, this was all being done during the pandemic, so it presented a challenge of trying to get people, you know, again, those who were using transit safely to their destinations, but also to take a look at what's happening right now? How can we, how can we better serve the members of the public? How can we better serve transit riders, those who depend on it, and those who we hope could benefit from it? And I think the key question throughout the study was, can integration, whether moderate or, or more extensive, can it improve the transit service and rider experience in Ventura County? There again are a lot of, a lot of issues, it's a complex, it's a complex system in many ways, because many cities like to have their own transit operators. I think especially some of the smaller cities, smaller than Simi, than Simi Valley anyway, Camarillo or Moore Park, enjoy having the autonomy of their own services. I think there are some overarching issues though, or low-hanging fruit, where we can look at consolidation of contracts, for instance, to provide more, you know, more efficiency if, if one transit provider, for, for example, is providing the same, you know, different transit services for a variety of cities, which is the case in some, in some ways. Also, I think the larger question of what is, how soon, and if ever, will, will transit ridership come back to the pre-pandemic levels? Or have people's ridership patterns changed so dramatically that we may be talking about a different, a whole different way of providing mobility through transit? A way that will, will hopefully bring more people to use it? There, in many cases, was a wide variation among all the operators in Ventura County, whether it was rider policies, or even fares and passes, and those variations can reflect local, local community desires, but in some cases, they can also hamper interoperability, especially for people looking to go from one end of the county to another. So there's a lot of different approaches to integration, and we, in this study, really endeavored to try to examine all of them. I would say that at the conclusion of the study, which was brought to the commission in February, we presented it as a roadmap to the future, a roadmap that could be implemented over time, depending on how, again, transit continues to recover, but also one that would take in mind that there are some, some cases where things are going to probably be need to, things will probably need to be done differently going forward, based on how people's mobility patterns have changed. I think a key point was collaboration throughout. Like the time of the, the fires or the floods, all the transit operators have worked together in an unprecedented level, and I think the pandemic, again, with the, the challenges we faced there, really forced a level of collaboration that was, that was new, at least to the, to the point that we were almost on a month-to-month basis in some cases, changing policies, whether masks were required, whether they weren't required, what, you know, what policies could be taken that had the most effective safety measures for passengers and drivers. Some of the key recommended actions and strategies were focused on, on financial resilience. Transit is largely funded through state funding from the half-cent sales tax that comes from our, our statewide sales tax. Also, there are some other federal monies that help, help provide public transit. But the strategies really looked to, to find some alignment, to find some areas where, again, rider policies, fares, standardization in marketing or outreach, and more consistent online messaging could help. I will note that in that time, I had been Executive Director for a little over a year, but I was the Transit Director for six years before that, so I will try not to talk about this too long, but it is, it is something that's been close to my heart for a long time. Two of our most successful programs actually came from state grants. One was the College Ride Program, which we initiated about six years ago, which allows all of Ventura County's college students to ride public transit on any of the systems at any time for free, and that applies to all the community colleges, to Cal Lutheran, and also to CSUCI. Just last year, when I think I became, came before the council, we also just implemented a youth ride free program, which allows youth from 10 to 18 to ride any system for free. Those, both those programs have made a big impact on recovering ridership and regaining ridership. I'm going to quickly go over the alternative summary. There were three alternative approaches that were put before the commission in February, and they range from mostly collaborative, partial consolidation along functional boundaries, and then full consolidation to one county-level agency. And again, quickly going over Alternative 1, which was the, as in sub-regional consolidation of demand-response service, again, looking at how, especially that demand-response trip, and making sure that could be better coordinated, better service planning, standardizing rider policies. Alternative 2, again, builds on that and looks to consolidate the fixed route services into two county-wide agencies, and that would include Gold Coast already in the West County, but then Thousand Oaks, Cannon Shuttle, Moore Park, and Simi Valley into a, either a JPA or a consolidated agency in the, in the East County. And then the three agencies would, would focus on, again, coordination within, within those systems to better, you know, ideally better the rider experience. And then finally, Alternative 3 would envision all public transit services being integrated into the Gold Coast Transit System. That would require the board structure of Gold Coast to change, and VCTC would still remain as the Regional Transportation Planning Agency, again, sorry for all the acronyms, but again, all the bus operations would, would go toward one centralized system. There was fairly vibrant discussion among the board members at the meeting, but, but not a clear, or, or a clear consensus on one option. I would say there was not, I'd say, much support for the full consolidation option, but some, you know, significant support for Alternative 1 and 2. As far as comparisons, depending who, who makes the argument, you can argue the merits of, of each one, and I would just note that the plan itself, as a roadmap, doesn't preclude any of them from happening at a certain point in time. One other point I'll make that many of you heard here before is that Ventura County is unique in not having a local self-help sales tax, a, a tax, a local tax just dedicated to transportation. Many of you heard this already, our neighbors to the north, Santa Barbara, LA County has four, almost all our surrounding counties have at least one. A benefit of having that local sales tax is you have more operations money for things like public transit, which makes consolidation or higher-frequency transit more, more feasible. Even though there has been an increase in federal funding with the recent federal transportation, bipartisan federal transportation bill passed last year, as you know, the state funding went from, well, $100 billion surplus to now the neighborhood of a $23 billion deficit, and the first thing they're looking at cutting right now is transit. So we find that to be one of the challenges that has to be worked into this. So finally, again, the roadmap for the future. If nothing else, I feel like the TIES study helped define the issues and practical strategies we can take going forward. So in a way, the fact that we undertook this effort during the pandemic, during the changes and the upheaval that that caused, I think gave us a clearer-eyed look at how we can move forward most effectively. Some of the, some of the concerns that, that came out, again, some cities are, are looking at preserving their, their local services. Some services are, are almost dedicated to the cities themselves, the Ojai Trolley, for instance, or the Camarillo Dial-A-Ride, Moore Park's micro-transit project, but... But these are also, in many cases, like Moore Park's micro-transit project, very innovative and new solutions. The micro-transit project being, looking at the focus, instead of riding around large buses, to look at smaller vehicles that provide a demand-response service that go into neighborhoods that pick people up essentially either in zones or come to their curb in some cases. The point being that there are many different ways to, to provide public transit, and each community is different in, in its sense. I think some of the concerns about full consolidation were that the regional agencies and, and that some cities might lose some of their autonomy. There was even concern that Gold Coast may have to limit some of its service, provide service in, in other areas of the community, even though they have some of the highest ridership right now. One of the recommendations that came out of February was that we would continue to solicit public input and that we would go to each city, each city council, and provide an update. And we are not quite halfway through going to each of the cities, but this engagement will continue and our work with your transit staff, with the city managers, with all the stakeholders that have been part of this plan will inform our next steps going forward. One thing we're looking at right now that we don't have to wait for is really looking at some of the low-hanging fruit actions. And again, that's looking at things like consolidating some of the, some of the service options for people, finding more effective ways that VCTC, working with the transit agencies, can better get transit information to people. We've had a lot of success with some of our countywide outreach programs, including a, a Spanish, the first, our first Spanish-only, Spanish-language outreach program that we just launched and won an award for, I'm very proud of recently. And it was a program that, again, VCTC worked with all the operators on to kind of fine-tune for their communities. So I know that was a long presentation, a lot of information, but I wanted to, to, again, to be here to answer any questions. I wish I could tell you that there was one simple best answer to go forward on this, that everybody would be in agreement on. I, I have some, you know, personal and strong feelings about which way we should or, or shouldn't go, but again, I, I think the, the collective wisdom that led to the input of this project will be helpful and I think will stand, not just VCTC, but will stand Ventura County in, in good stead in grappling with the challenges that we continue to face going forward.
Thank you. Great presentation. Appreciate you coming out and giving that to us. Questions? I see DeeDee has a question.
Mine's kind of on a personal note. I was just curious, the, the Cannon Shuttle, is that under VCTC?
No.
Because it used to be privately paid for. When I was on the park board, they came to us to ask for us to pay for it one year.
Yeah.
That's why I was wondering, so how is it included in here, a low-hanging fruit?
Well, the Cannon Shuttle is, was a program, it's actually operated by MV Transit. So the Thousand Oaks Transit, even though it's a separately branded operation, does essentially run that, you know, they, they run the service. But it was, as you know, it, it's been free fare since it started. And part of the, part of the way it was funded over time was, was that, and I, and I know that they're, they're still looking at wanting to keep that, you know, keep that free fare going forward. But the, the Cannon Shuttle was, I think, a good example of a, a, a unique solution that came up several, several years ago for, for one particular problem, you know, in that congestion area, and just finding a way that, especially the students who utilized it very heavily could, could find.
Students and day workers in the area.
Yes, and that, and I think when, when you look at the most successful programs, and one of them was, although it's still gaining back its ridership, but our, our Coastal Express Service, which is the big blue buses that run between Ventura and Santa Barbara and UCSB, that was a 20-year, that's been a 20-year service partnership. And Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, our, our sister agency in the north, they pay basically half of that service. So it was, both counties realized we have this need and we were able to get them to agree to pay for half of it, we operate it. And, you know, it's kind of for, you know, for anyone who works in Santa Barbara or has to do that commute, people are very happy to have that option to, to take that, you know, take that bus up there and not have to sit in traffic the whole time.
I've had employees use that, yes. It's, it's a wonderful service.
I used to use it when I, when I was working in Santa Barbara.
It's a wonderful service. And the, the free services for the students and the colleges, I think that's wonderful. I'm very, whenever I meet somebody that is going to one of the colleges, have you ever tried that? You know, it's, it's free and it's easy and, you know, you don't have to buy a parking permit, number one, you know, that type of thing. But it's, I really appreciate that for all of our students in our communities. And I didn't realize we went up to Santa, UC Santa Barbara.
We do. And that just, and that was just a recent addition. And, and I want to just note on that quickly, that state funding, it's again, one more last acronym, LC TOP, or the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, that came from the cap-and-trade funding that the state started doing several years ago. They derive revenues from that program and they gave them back to each county. Now, I think it shows the level of collaboration and cooperation among all Ventura County's operators, because each operator could have just taken that little chunk of money, Simi Valley could have taken theirs, Camarillo could have taken theirs, and done, well, not much, but VCTC said, let, let's pool all this money and, and do a program that will really have some, some benefit. First, it was the College Ride, and then using that same source of funds, the Youth Ride Free Program. So that doesn't happen in every county. They are not always able to come together and, and agree to use the money effectively like that. So it's, I think, again, testament to the VCTC Board for, for having a, a regional look at these problems.
All right. Thank you, Martin, and thank you, Mayor Protem Judge, for serving all these years. He always shares with us when he has things of interest, so thank you for that.
Any other questions? Sure.
Thank you, Martin. Appreciate the presentation. And just to follow up on the discussion you were just having with, with Councilmember Kavanaugh, if there is a youth or a student who would like to avail themselves, first of all, is there, is there a mapping or some way of knowing that, well, I first, I should ask, is it only to the schools or can they use it to, to go back and forth in other?
They can use it for any, any trip purpose.
So if they wanted to go to the beach, for instance?
They want to go to the beach.
Okay, that's what I wanted to confirm. And is there, where would, where do they find the information to know how they transfer from this bus to that?
Sure. I, I would go to, I think our website is probably our best source of information, goventura.org. Or, again, that has all our maps, all our routes, and it also, also has links to each of the different, you know, operators they can call. We also have our, they can also call the VCTC 1-800 number, they can, and we're, what we're trying to do is that if they sign up too for our, our social media, they can link to, you know, our, our social media outreach too. So that's, that's something we're continually trying to promote.
And do they just show student ID when they get on? How does that, is there a token? Is there a pass? How does that, how does that work?
You know, we, we ask that if they have a student ID to show, but that is not, it's not, it's not a hard, fast requirement. I mean, it's, it's generally, we've had a pretty good, especially now that it's the College Ride and the Youth Ride, most, most drivers in the system understand, you know, who can use it, who can't. But if they do, some students do, some schools do offer student IDs and, and they can show that, but, but if they don't have one, they can just say they're, they're a student. And we have, you know, again, it's been working, working quite well. We're refining it as we go, but.
No, that's very good. And I, and this is going to be fun. I bike with a friend and I already am planning out some, some trips, so, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I will have more of these sent to the city, so you'll have plenty.
Excellent.
We printed a lot of them, so I'll make sure.
Thank you very much again for a great report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item four, public statements. During this agenda item four, the City Council, the City Council will hear public statements from the first 10 persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first 10 persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will be called on to speak during Agenda Item Number Six, which is a continuation of Agenda Item Number Four. Agenda Items Four and Six are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which a card was submitted to speak for this public statements item four for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor Protem, unless you have any more comments, we will, we can begin public statements.
Only comments are welcome and we're looking forward to your comments.
The first speaker is Marshall Miranda.
Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Gabler, Mayor Judge, David, David Casette, Ms. Kavanaugh, and Ms. Lister. My name is Marshall Miranda. I'm a 20-year employee working at the wastewater treatment plant down at the other end of this, of the city. I work as a plant maintenance mechanic. Five years ago, I joined the Service Employees International Union, Local 721 and Simi Valley. I started out as a member-at-large. Four years ago, I became vice president, and this year I am a president. I'd like to introduce a couple of our chapter board members, Vivian DeLuca with the Police Department, Jim Perettis at the sanitation plant, Nick Wilftong at the Water Department, and SCIU's chief negotiator, Arum Agdon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. From all of us at SCIU, Local 721, Simi Valley Chapter Board, we'd like to thank the following. First off, we'd like to thank the City of Simi Valley, its city manager, Brian Gabler, and the City Council for tentatively approving the salary increases for all of Simi Valley employees. This is much appreciated and cherished. Second, the chapter board would like to thank Samantha Argabright, deputy city manager, Shannon Nash, senior HR analyst, and Carolyn Johnson, administrative services director, for all their hard work and for acknowledging that the salary increases were a long time overdue. Not only will these upcoming raises financially help all city employees who worked very hard to make the city work, the salary increases will come eight weeks earlier and the employees will not have to wait until the contract expires on July 1st. Third, the chapter board wants to personally thank Arum Agdon, who worked intensively with Samantha, Shannon, and Carolyn, and successfully achieved the raises in record time. And lastly, the chapter board would like to thank all of its members who not only came together and approved the city's offer of a 10% increase in salary over two years, but also ratified the new contract immediately and not dragging it out for many months. A 6% tentative salary increase will start immediately on the May 12 paycheck, while the remaining 4% salary, excuse me, increase kicks in in April 2024. Great job to all the negotiators on both sides, and thank you from all of us at Service Employees International Union. Thank you very much.
Teresa Lewis?
I'm sorry, I was talking to you. Hi, my name is Teresa Lewis. I live in Simi Valley, currently the chairperson of the ADA Committee. I just wanted to say that I'm glad that you're doing the ties and looking at different ways to incorporate getting the transportation unified in the county of Ventura. Hopefully it'll work out. I mean, it does have some downsides, losing road fixings and stuff like that, but, you know, we, we'll hope for the best and see what they say. I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, listening to that and, and trying to do it. All right.
Thank you.
I think I had my opinion on the, you can't hear me? That's a miracle.
For the people at home.
Okay. I love it. I had, I had my opinion before I came, but after I listened to him, it's very interesting, with the exception that when they said that they're going to get people's opinions and stuff, I'd like to see him work more with the employees. We had something that happened a couple of years, about four years, when they did one of these things, and the employees, some of the employees, especially the bus drivers, didn't feel like they were being heard. And I really think that in order to do a, a, an operation like this, everybody needs to be involved. And good leadership will make that happen. And so enough of that. My other, my other comment is, oh, I'm going to break a rule. Rocky, I really appreciate what you've done. I have a son that had a kidney transplant. Thank you. I'm sorry that that was to me important, but I, three months ago, I broke four ribs, wound up going to the emergency hospital, and it was the worst ride ever. When are we going to fix our roads? This has gone too far. I, I, oh my gosh, you wouldn't believe what it was like when you have four broken ribs and my lungs were affected too, to drive on these roads and hit every bump. And, and even I go down Patricia and, and some of the roads that are on our street, it's, it's bad. It's bad. And I ride an electric scooter now, which is my, my car, and it's, it's tough riding. It's tough riding on these roads. And it, it needs to be repaired. And we, I thought we played a tax, an extra tax to get roads fixed, didn't we? I mean, but when are they going to get fixed? I mean, that was a couple of years ago that we stupidly voted in that tax. I mean, and to me, it was stupid because nothing's being done. And, but we, I, I'd like to see those roads repaired. I mean, it was painful, painful. And it's, it's, no matter where you're, where we go in Simi Valley, we need those roads fixed. So that, that was my main thing that I wanted to talk about today, except I did want to get into the ADA, but I'm going to wait for the commission meeting. And I'm going to study this a little bit more and then I'll, I'll be heard then. But I think that's it. But thank you again.
Thank you. For all the speakers coming out, just want you to understand, you might not understand, we don't, we don't, I know it seems like we're rude because we're not interacting with you, but we're actually not allowed to. So that's why we didn't, you know, interact with your questions.
Good evening. My name is Tim Wiedemeyer. I'm a resident of Simi Valley. I'm also a police officer of 20 years, with 15 at Simi Valley. I'm currently the POA president for the last nine years. I've served on the board for 12. I want to speak on behalf of item 8A, which is the proposed contract or tentative agreement with the POA. I don't want to overstep my bounds, but I wholeheartedly believe I am speaking on behalf of every Simi Valley employee across the board, not just the POA. First off, I appreciate the council moving forward tonight with a vote for the POA contract. So thank you very much for that. And I commend the city's leadership and the negotiation team and all the city staff for the hard work they put in for this negotiation process, and it definitely doesn't go for granted, especially those that have sat at the table for probably close to four or five contracts now. The city does a lot of hard work and it stems from the top and works all the way down. So thank you very much for that. The POA overwhelmingly supports this tentative agreement of 10% over the 27-month period. When I brought this to the ratification meeting, the union was very surprised because it happened very quick, but there brought some excitement that I hadn't seen in probably three contracts in front of the membership, and it meant a lot to me. And I just want to pass that along to the city, because we are all working together. And like I said before, this contract benefits everybody throughout the city, and that's what makes it, makes it really great, and also bringing it early. And that's what makes it really great and also bringing it early. Members were excited. They were energized, and the ratification process went overwhelmingly very well. So it is great to see every person benefit from this contract and this negotiation. And I wholeheartedly want to say thank you to the city again, and we definitely support this tentative agreement. Thank you.
Nikki Leeann?
Hi, I'm Nikki Leeann. I'm representing the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce as a board member and a small business owner. And I just wanted to pass on a few things from our board chair and our CEO. Our next Good Morning Simi Valley breakfast will be Friday, April 14th at 7:00 a.m. at the Best Western Passado Royale. Register at simivally, simichamber.org, or call the Chamber of Commerce. Mary Beth Jacobson was hired to the Chamber for workforce development. Her primary mission is to help integrate career and technical training in the local school curricula and is already off to an incredible start. And the Chamber has a tremendous staff resource in Jim Vigder, dedicated to following legislation that will impact our business owners and advocate on their behalf. If you have any questions, I may or may not have answers, but you can always reach out to Kathy Van Etten, our CEO, or any one of the Chamber's staff. Thank you.
Lincoln Purcell?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Protem, Judge, and members of the city council, as well as other city staff that's here tonight. I just wanted to take a brief moment of your time to say thank you and express the Police Managers Association's appreciation for the proposed upcoming contract. I have been a Simi Valley police officer for a little over 17 years, and just last year, I took over as the manager, rather, the president of the Police Managers Association. And as part of that, participated in the negotiation process this year. I speak on behalf of our entire membership when I say thank you for considering this and moving forward with it. On a very personal note, I want to say thank you to Sam Argabright, as well as Shannon Nash. Their professionalism and the candor that we were able to just go through negotiations was really unprecedented and very appreciated. So with that, I just want to let you know that the Police Managers Association unanimously voted in favor of this contract and is very, as I said, I keep saying the same word over and over again, very appreciative of this moving forward. Again, the smoothness and the ease with which the negotiations took place this year was really, really nice and refreshing. We look forward to future years of positive relationship with the city council and certainly appreciate the leadership, just as kind of to echo what Tim said earlier. That leadership starts at the top. It starts with the city council, the city management, and we appreciate the opportunity to be able to work with you. So thank you for your time, and thank you.
John Lapper?
City council, here is my update on the 63 eucalyptus trees on Sinaloa Road that were voted on by the city council for removal for $170,000 last October. After my concerns about the flaws in the arborist staff report, Councilman Elaine Lister at a subsequent city council meeting was able to get city manager Brian Gabler to get an impartial licensed arborist to give a second opinion on the need to remove all 63 trees. The review was done by Jan C. Scow, consulting arborist, December 7th through 9th. The review is very thorough. It basically refuted the State Green Incorporated arborist Sean McCormick, who is a contractor with the City of Simi Valley, and city's arborist David Sandoval. The trees had been pruned frequently, reducing likelihood of limb failure, are generally in good health, and no issues with beetles or insect infestation. Of the 63 trees voted for removal, only 44 are actually blue gum eucalyptus trees. None of those reached Level 2 risks. The recommendation is for removal of 13 trees for various reasons. It is worth noting that since the inspection on December 7th, Simi Valley has endured a 40-year record rainfall along with strong winds, and there has been no further damage to these beautiful trees. Hopefully, the city council will take seriously the new report and ask serious questions to arborist McCormick and Sandoval, as this has always had the appearance of someone's agenda and rush to remove these trees with little transparency and truth on the matter. Hopefully, this is a valuable lesson learned, to listen to the public comments, yes, even John Lapper, and not rubber stamp staff reports, and to seek out second opinions, ask tough questions, and have a fair competitive bid system in place. Automatically renewing contracts or extensions may not always benefit the city or its taxpayers. State Greens Incorporated's handling of this matter should trigger a view of the contract with the City of Simi Valley as serious questions on their bid and arborist reports were flawed. If the city council go ahead with the removal of 13 eucalyptus trees, a competitive bid process should be looked into. A huge thank you to the overwhelming support for this new report on social media via Nextdoor in the thousands and over 200 positive responses on Simi Facebook. To Councilman Rocky Rhodes, a single yes or no would be nice. If I apply for neighborhood council District 4, will you vote yes or no on my nomination? To Mayor Protem Judge, I challenge you to drive the community and envision what our city would look like if they accept your desire to make 80% of the residential front yards into parking lots. Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor Protem, that was the last speaker.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 4A, city council comments regarding public statements.
Rocky?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Trying to bundle some of these. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. It's important that we actually get that feedback and hear from everyone. For the representatives of SEIU, the POA, and PMA, be careful. You were so congratulatory, I feel like we left something on the table. This city works because of you, and I was a very small part in the ratification of that. Congratulations to the staff that did it. We appreciate you and all of you done, and it was time, and thank you. Rebecca, she left. She left. I appreciated the kidney comment. Thank you. I think I got it all. Thanks.
DeeDee?
Thank you. Basically what he said, with a couple of just minor little things. It was very nice to see all the different groups come today to watch, to make sure that we approve your contracts. So thank you all for being here. It was nice to hear from Teresa from the ADA board. I really wanted, and I also wanted to ask Nikki Leeann, who was here. They had a Punch-athon fundraiser for the brain train on Sunday, and I was going to ask her how they did because there was nowhere to park when we wanted to go to Eggs and Things, so we went to Junkyard instead. So I wanted to say thank you to her. And Mr. Lapper, I do appreciate you bringing that up about the trees, and we'll see what happens this evening. So thank you. It's good, that's what the public is, that's what public comments are for. It's a comment, challenge, question. So thank you. Thank you for everyone else that spoke tonight.
I'll be brief. I don't have much voice. We will be, thank you for all those that discussed the contracts, etc., and we appreciate, we appreciate that the membership understood what was trying to be done and were very supportive and appreciate all that were involved. I did want to comment on Ms. McCann's comments with regards to broken ribs and traveling on emergency roads. It is my understanding, and I, she talked about the extra tax for fixing the roads. I actually just want to remind people that actually we approved additional funds for road repair from surplus funds to actually do that, and I know that they're working on that. I wanted to actually ask Mr. Gabler, maybe you can address this just quickly, if there is a pothole that is just bothering someone, who do they call? What should they do to, I mean, if they're observing something specifically that hasn't been fixed yet?
Two options. Our website has a report of maintenance issue that you are able to fill out a form on our website, or you can call 583-6400, and we'll take the report.
Thank you. I just want people to know that they have, that there is a way if they're concerned about something that they're observing the roads. But again, thank you for all that participated. So much appreciated.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for all the employee representative groups that came out. Just like Rocky said, you guys do a great job in this city. You keep the city looking good and being the great place it is to live, work, and raise a family. And that's the end of my comments.
Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings under consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. As the record show, a due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their car was submitted for this public testimony, item 5, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the city council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. Agenda item 5A, a joint public hearing by the city council of the City of Simi Valley and Board of Directors of Ventura County Water Works District Number 8 to consider adoption of a joint resolution approving adjustments to the citywide schedule of fees and service charges. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2023-15/WWD-292, a joint resolution of the city council of the City of Simi Valley and the Board of Directors of Ventura County Water Works District Number 8 approving adjustments to the schedule of service charges. And Administrative Services Director Carolyn Johnson is here to present this item.
May we have an oral report on this matter by staff?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. This item before you is to approve adjustments to the city's schedule of fees and charges. In November of 2010, California voters approved Proposition 26, which defines certain revenue as taxes and certain revenues as fees. Prop 26 also imposed a requirement that a fee must not exceed the city's reasonable cost to provide the service. To make sure the city is in compliance with that requirement, the city conducts a full-cost study every five to seven years. And in between cost studies, fees are adjusted on a yearly basis based on the Consumer Price Index. In December of 2019, city council approved an adjusted schedule of fees and charges based on a new cost study at that time. Council also approved setting fees at 100% cost recovery so that taxpayers are not subsidizing personal choice services for customers. Personal choice services are services that benefit an individual or company versus a city's service provided for the general benefit of all taxpayers, such as public safety or street and infrastructure maintenance. So continuing the effort to achieve full cost recovery, staff has identified a number of adjustments that are being recommended at this time. They are as follows. Adding a convenience fee to pass through the costs of credit card and debit card transactions. Currently, the city is absorbing the fees from credit and debit card usage by our customers. This is costing the city approximately $180,000 per year. At this time, we are in the process of switching credit card processors. Currently, we're using multiple processors that charge varying fees. We're moving to just one processor, which will standardize our operations and consistently charge a fee of 3.25% for credit card and debit card payments. This will allow the customer to be charged directly for the payment processing fee with the city receiving the full amount of the payment due. Customers that wish to avoid this charge can pay with electronic funds, transfer, paper check, or bank-initiated payment. We expect this new payment processor to be up and running in May for online permits and all over-the-counter transactions. Our online utility bill payments will not be on this new payment processor until January of 2024, and the fee will not be charged until the new payment processor is up and running. Also, a voluntary lot merger fee. At the October 10th of 2022 city council meeting, an ordinance was approved to provide procedures for a voluntary lot merger. However, no fee was brought forward at that time. This process requires a certificate of compliance and the same amount of staff time as the standard lot merger with a certificate of compliance. Therefore, the same fee is being recommended. A communication site license lease agreement. Currently, the city has a fee for a communication site lease agreement for the Water Works District Number 8, but not for city operations. Staff would also like to have the same fee available for city operations. The purpose of this fee is to recover costs associated with negotiating and developing a site lease for a telecommunications site facility. This is a growing service that the city will be providing as the cellular communication industry expands to provide services to its customers. Also, staff is recommending the addition of an administrative processing fee for Ventura County Animal Services to recoup the processing cost with an outside vendor of Ventura County Animal Services and city staff. A new homebuyer assistance application fee is recommended for moderate-income households to be charged upon complete application submission. Low-income households will be exempt from this fee. The fee is proposed to be set at a cost that covers two and a half hours of staff time and the cost of a credit report. Also, a homebuyer assistance loan processing fee is recommended to be charged upon initial income qualification and pursuing an actual loan for moderate-income households. Again, low-income households are exempt from this fee. The fee is proposed to cover three and three-quarter hours of staff time, and there will be no charge for city notary services. Building and Safety is recommending a permit plan check extension fee and a fee for a change to a permit, both to be set at the same rate as the current building permit issuance fee. Also, a request for substitution of alternate method or materials fee and a fee for an application for unreasonable hardship exceptions to disabled access requirements, both to be set at the current hourly building plan check fee. And the Planning Division has one fee to eliminate as it is no longer a service that is provided, some cleanup items to the existing wording in the current schedule of fees and charges, the addition of three new deposits, and the revision of two deposit amounts, as well as a few new fees. This is all detailed in the chart on page 5 of the staff report. So this is an overview of the adjustments that are being recommended at this time. That concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of staff? Elaine?
Thank you. As I was reviewing, I appreciate, as I was reviewing the report, there were just a few charges I wanted to understand better. I noticed that we're adding an administrative processing fee for animal services for $38. What does that fee cover? What, can you help me understand what that fee is for?
I think somebody from Environmental Services can probably answer that.
I apologize. I should have called you earlier today and not put you on the spot like this. I just, it would just, and if we don't know, it's all right, but I just...
Mara would probably know that. I can...
Stratus can handle it.
Okay.
He's on his way.
I just know that we're, that our animal services is contracted with the county.
Yes.
And so I'm trying to understand that we are assessing the fee for the county, or is this collection, anyway, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say that I think that the basis for the fee is working with the outside vendor and recovering the costs associated with that.
It's our, we do contract with Ventura County. However, there is, there is time spent on our side to process complaints and things of that nature, and we're just trying to recover that cost.
So if there, if so, and I'm just trying to understand the circumstance. If someone's trying to go to the shelter to adopt a dog, they, no, that's not, this is about.
No.
This is about processing complaints.
These are issues that come to us that we have to process through Ventura County.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Wonderful. You explained the homebuyer loan processing fee of $460. It wasn't clear to me when the fee is assessed. Do they only pay the fee if they receive the loan? Or is the fee paid for simply applying whether or not the loan is received?
For the loan processing fee or the application fee?
My understanding is that, yes, once they get approved, then the fees will be charged.
Okay, whether or not the loan is actually used, just if they're approved to have the loan.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And have we charged that in the past?
We haven't had this program in the past.
Okay, so this is, this is to support the new program?
Yes.
Got it. So we don't know success or, okay. Got it. So we don't know success or, okay, fair enough. That, that, thank you, Mr. Jim. Appreciate it. A question on page five. It talks about landscaping, plan review, inspection deposit increasing to $2,500 from $1,000. Boy, I'm making you guys all stay awake out there? You were getting bored. You think you just have to sit and, no, thank you. I'm sorry. I was trying to understand, is this to make sure that the landscape work actually gets completed, or what is the reason for the deposit changing?
No, this is a, this is a consultant deposit to review tree reports, review final landscape plans, and we need an adequate deposit and administrative fee to cover those costs. And it's better to get a higher deposit, which we often refund if we don't use all that money.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. I just tried to understand. Thank you. And then this is just one last general question, and maybe this is a Mr. Gabler question, but I'll ask it. As I understand, we are, it's required that fees are tied to the, they, to basically, basically they have to match the reasonable expenses associated with, with that activity, and that's why. And specifically, we're allowed to charge fees for special benefit or privilege. And so I know we, for instance, charge fees for our filming, which covers the expenses associated with processing that, et cetera, that application. I know that there are other agencies or entities that report that they've made X amount of money with their filming or brought that into their community. I guess my question is, how, how they can say they made money if they're just supposed to be breaking even?
They shouldn't be making money on the fees they charge to process the permit. What they may be indicating is that there is a, there is a metric that the State of California Film Commission uses for every day or half-day of a certain type of filming, motion picture, commercial, television, that generates a certain amount of money per day.
Got it.
And so I think that's probably what they're referring to.
So the reporting may be the metric of how much money has been brought into the...
That's correct.
Into the community?
That's correct.
Okay. So, thank, okay, thank you. I would just, I understand that was not on the report as far as fees, but it was a fee, and I thought maybe it was appropriate to ask. So, thank you. Those are the questions I had.
Thanks. Rocky?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I had many questions that the manager has answered. There were a couple that I just wanted to, to bring up again and get some clarification on. The proposal for the fee to put up a cell tower, it indicated to me that there were no cell towers in the city itself, and that this is a brand-new thing that we're going to be doing. And, and that was a confusing item. Can you expand on why we're now charging a fee and we haven't been in the past?
Yeah. So, we, we currently don't have any cell towers on city-owned property. We do have them on Waterworks District Number Eight property, all of our water tanks around town and those locations. We have a fee set up to charge for the Waterworks District Number Eight, but we don't have the fee. We have to go through the process to make that fee applicable to city-owned property as well. So that's what this will do.
And can cell towers be put on private property, and if so, do we need, we get a fee for that?
We do not get a fee, but they have to apply for a conditional use permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And only one other, and I just wanted to dive a little bit deeper. And on page five, in the table listed under Environmental Services, the very last item, there has been a fee of about $1,000, but now we're moving to a percentage of project. And what that means is on a million-dollar project, there would be another $99,000. What, what, what were we not covering that we would need this big of a, a increase in a fee for?
So this fee covers, let me back up. When there's a general plan amendment request to change zoning from commercial or industrial to residential, the City Council has a policy to require the applicant to do an economic analysis to determine what the economic impact is to the city from taking potentially job-creating property or economic-creating property to a residential property. And what that cost will be, because residential property does cost money, because we have to provide services to those as well. So we ask for that analysis to be done. As part of that analysis, when we get that back, we will often do a peer review, and so we'll have another expert look at that and review what that consultant did. What we're, what we're asking for is there is a fee involved in that, but we didn't caught, we didn't include our cost in processing that whole process. So we're asking for a 10%, 10% of the contract to review the, the analysis. So we're actually able to recover our cost involved in that.
So it's not necessarily 10% of the overall project that might happen. It was the...
Consultant contract.
Of the, the actual report that was given.
Correct. Yes.
That makes more sense. And then I guess, sorry, one last one, is the, how are, how are these fees determined? What metric does the city use to figure out what something costs so that we make sure that we recover our costs?
So we, we do have a metric that, that looks at a number of different issues, including the number of personnel that actually touch the item, the hours that are spent by each personnel, the hourly rate by each one of those personnel, indirect and direct cost, what other processes that may be required. Are we generating a report? Are we reviewing a report? Is there electronic processing involved to try and recover, fully recover our costs involved in providing that service or reviewing that document or whatever it may be?
And back in 2019, we had a third-party company help us with that review?
That's correct. 2019, we had a very in-depth review of every city fee. In December of 19, the City Council approved that. And then, as Ms. Johnson indicated, we'll, we'll usually do a deeper dive into all of our fees every five to eight years, which would be a couple years away. Yep.
Thank you. No other questions?
Anybody else have any questions?
Would you like a motion?
No, we gotta go.
I'm sorry.
At this time, I'd like to open the hearing for anybody in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, we did not receive any speaker cards for public testimony.
Okay. Then this hearing is now closed. Any further comments or questions from the City Council members?
I have just one quick discussion comment, and maybe I need clarification. All of these seem reasonable and, and make sense. My question is maybe, and maybe our banker on the, on the dais is the one to be having the discussion. I recognize our homebuyer assistance program is new, and it's designed to help lower-income parties be able to purchase some kind of a, a home. And so I understand that there are costs involved on our end to help facilitate that, but I, is it customary to always, like in the banking industry, you apply to get a loan? It seems to me normally the fee is assessed if you actually access the loan. If you don't access the loan, you're not charged a fee. And I, and I guess, and that's a question for DeeDee.
Well, I'm not a mortgage expert, but, but we do lines of credit, and you pay the fee whether you use the line of credit or not. So it's kind of a similar type of thing here, because it still costs us to put together the package and to do the approvals and everything. So there are fees associated with it.
And I, and I understand that that is, that that's the case, that that makes sense. I guess I'm just being very mindful of the intention of this program is to help those who are having difficulty qualifying for loans or getting access to purchasing. Would it, in my mind, it might make sense to, the, the fee seems reasonable, particularly if they use the loan, and if they're able to access or actually buy something by all means. But if it doesn't result in any kind of a home purchase or access, using the loan, I, me personally, I wonder if that maybe I would, I would prefer not to, I would prefer that to be a service that, that, that we provide and then assess as it's accessed to be part of that. Any other thoughts, though, from my fellow colleagues?
I just, just want to be a little careful. We do have a public hearing, so you asking questions of another council member, the argument would be that someone, the public would have a right to, in essence, cross-examine.
Okay. Fair enough. I'm not, I'm not asking the, fair enough. Not asking the question then. I'm stating my, my desire then, that we might consider, if there's anyone else that would join me, in that one area, basically, yes, assessing that, but only if, if the loan results in actually accessing and, and accessing the loan, and then, and resulting in purchase.
For someone applying for that loan, are there assistance monies available to apply for and qualify for a loan in which they...
Be able to use those funds, or...
I don't follow.
Sorry. It's, this is for low income, yes?
Any income.
This is any, I'm sorry. Never mind.
And if we don't have a fee, in my opinion, if we don't have a fee of some type that we're recovering our costs, we could be going through 20 applications and no loan going through. But to me, the, I don't see the, the odds of a, a purchasing loan being approved and not being utilized are probably extremely, extremely low, I would guess.
What I wouldn't want is applicants to go on a fishing expedition to see if they can get qualified, and we're spending our time and effort to process them and not recovering our costs.
And we would not charge this to low income. We would only charge it to households with more than 80% area medium income.
That's what I needed to hear. Okay. Okay. What she said. Thank you, Carolyn. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. So now we entertain a motion.
Offer a motion? I move to approve proposed adjustments to the citywide schedule of service charges and adopt resolution number 2023-15-WWD-292, approving service fee adjustments to the schedule of service charges.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
Anybody like anything pulled from the consent calendar?
Just a quick, quick question, please, on, on number two.
Okay.
My, my question was, attachment C was supposed to be the 64 identified food pantries. Was that omitted from the report? Because I, I guess I just wanted to see how thoroughly local efforts in Simi Valley had been identified, and what efforts we've already engaged in locally.
Excellent question. I don't have an answer. Wes, do you know? Were we missing an attachment?
Page, page seven is where it indicates. I'm sorry.
So, attachment C, I believe, was a part of regional MOU?
But that's more of a local thing. That's not a part of this report, but there is local efforts ongoing. So there are multiple food banks and multiple food generators actively donating at this time.
God, and I guess, and I guess my question is, I really just quite wanted to see how, how well identified it had been at a local level, since, if I'm understanding, what this is about is basically banding together to make sure we meet the purpose of, of this bill, or identifying the 20% reduction, reduction in food waste, kind of, or...
Yeah, so, right, correct. So it, it's just more of a county-wide, regional approach to share resources and information, because sometimes local food banks don't have the capacity to take the food that's available. And so this program will, you know, allow this administrator to kind of guide where the food is flowing so that there's capacity available, so that we're reducing the amount of food waste as much as possible.
I, I, that makes sense. And I guess I was just, I, and I, and I, I guess I was just curious to see how, what the research had been specific to Simi Valley already, what the, if, as we join, or if we join and approve this, how, where they were of what pantries we have, and, and, but I guess that all is to be determined. So it was just curiosity about that attachment. But what you, what I'm hearing you say is that that wasn't part of this report, even though it referenced it. It was part of...
Yes. So there was the, the food capacity study, what was it? Oh, so there's a food capacity study done, that, that showed kind of the generation rates and what we're able to take here locally. And every city in the county was a part of that capacity study, and what it showed was that a regional approach of sharing these resources from time to time was a lot more efficient in terms of distributing the edible food. So, you know, just trying to do this in-house and locally wasn't the most efficient way of doing it, because it's not exactly a static amount of food generated.
Sure.
You know, sometimes we have a very large amount, sometimes very little. So the, the capacity study identified all of our covered food generators, as well as all the, the food banks. So that information does exist, and this is just, you know, the request proposal is gonna hopefully get an administrator that centralizes all of this information countywide so that it can be distributed equally.
And, and do we have a sense of our food pantries? Are they supportive of this centralized oversight? Do we have a sense of that, whether this, they think this serves their interests?
Oversight.
Well, not oversight, but it's distribution. I'm sorry. It's, it's, that's what this is about, is distributing. Basically, if I, let me be simplistic. Our food generators might be at a grocery store that has produce that is overripe or, and need to be used. And so right now, our food pantries, some of them come and pick things up and distribute them, which is great. This would basically centralize that activity, or there would be, in Ventura County, there'd be one person who would, who would identify all the grocery stores, identify all the food pantries, and then say, this is, this is the ideal flow. Is that correct? Is that how this works?
Right. Yeah. And so, right now, the majority of the food is delivered to these pantries. So what this is doing is creating a more efficient delivery system for the pantries that have the ability to take in food. So I, I'm not sure exactly how the, the current food pantries feel about this, but it's just a greater amount of information sharing.
Okay.
Let's just say for the record, we pulled number two.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry, Mayor Pro Tem.
I think at the end of the day, the food pantries are, I mean, the grocery stores can still give directly to the food pantries. This is another option that's gonna make sure we capture all the food, as opposed to what the...
And this is basically about reporting, is it not? Because we have to, we have to really show that the food has been saved.
That's correct. Not only do we have to redirect it, but we have to report it.
So this might be a more effective way of actually reporting?
Absolutely.
That makes sense. Thank you. I just needed to understand. Thank you.
I move to approve consent items one and two.
Second.
Motion second. Please call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 8A, approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association and adoption of a resolution. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2023-11, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley amending the memorandum of understanding between the City of Simi Valley and the Simi Valley Police Officers Association and rescinding resolution number 2021-38 and all provisions, all previous resolutions to the extent that they are in conflict here with. And Assistant City Manager Samantha Argabright is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, and members of the City Council. The item, excuse me, the item before you is the adoption of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association, or POA. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the City Council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included recognizing employees' commitment and dedication to the city, and provided compensation increase to increase salary parity with other local jurisdictions to assist with the retention of current employees and recruitment of new employees. Representatives of the Simi Valley POA worked with the city's negotiating team toward an agreement that would accomplish these goals, and the proposed revisions to their MOU are before you for consideration. Next slide, please. The agreement before you is for a 27-month term that includes a 10% salary increase over the next two years. A 6% salary increase would be effective April 10th, 2023, and a 4% salary increase will be effective April 8th, 2024. And I will briefly review the additional proposed terms. Simi flex amount will remain at the 2022 plan level, plan year levels, with no adjustments during the term of the agreement. The current rate that new members are paying for the normal cost of CalPERS has also been updated. The current rate that new members are paying for the normal cost of CalPERS has also been updated. The capped annual final compensation has been updated for new members. The amount of Pemka has been updated for 2023. The city will continue to pay the minimum as required in 2024 and 2025. All references to a side letter regarding 12-hour shifts for the traffic unit have been removed. The meal allowance has been updated to reflect city policy, and the reference to Lexipol has been removed. The next, thank you, the next slide shows the two-year cost for the agreement to be $1,295,411.34. And this slide also breaks down the cost of each year of the agreement and how much the cost is attributed to salary and how much is attributed to PERS. At this time, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association as presented. As you can see above, the summary states that it is again a 27-month agreement with a 10% salary increase over the two years, with a 6% increase front-loaded, a 4% increase next year, and 114 employee positions would be impacted. Thank you for your time, this concludes my report, and we're available for questions.
Any questions of staff from the City Council?
May I make a motion? I move to adopt the attached resolution number 2023-11, approving revisions to the current memorandum of understanding, the MOU, with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association, SVPOA employees.
Second.
Motion to second, let's call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item eight B, approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Managers Association and adoption of a resolution. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2023-12, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, amending the memorandum of understanding between the City of Simi Valley and the Simi Valley Police Managers Association and rescinding resolution number 2022-13 and all previous resolutions to the extent that they are in conflict here with. And Samantha Argabright is presenting this item as well.
Good evening again. The item before you is the adoption of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Managers Association, or PMA. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the Council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included recognizing employees' commitment and dedication to the city and provide a compensation increase to increase salary parity with other local jurisdictions to assist with the retention of current employees and recruitment of new employees. Representatives of the Simi Valley PMA worked with the city's negotiating team toward an agreement that would accomplish these goals, and the proposed revisions to their MOU is before you for consideration. This is a 27-month agreement that includes a 10% salary increase over the next two years with a 6% salary increase effective April 10th, 2023, and a 4% salary increase effective April 8th, 2024. And there would be eight employee positions that would be impacted. And I will briefly review the additional proposed terms. The Simi flex amount will remain at the 2022 plan year levels with no adjustments during the term of the agreement. The current rate that SVPMA members are paying for the normal cost of CalPERS has been updated. The amount of Pemka has been updated for 2023. The city will continue to pay the minimum as required in 2024 and 25. Language has been updated to reflect that Tier Two sworn management members will pay the proper member rate. The deputy chief title was updated to assistant chief. Salary ranges for commander and assistant chief have been updated, and a side letter has been incorporated. The next slide, thank you, shows the two-year cost for the agreement to be $195,199.97. And it also breaks down the cost of the salary, that is attributed to salary, I'm sorry, and how much is attributed to PERS. And, next slide, again, 27-month agreement from beginning April 10th through June 30th of 2025 with a 10% salary increase over the next two years, with a 6% salary increase front-loaded this year, 4% salary increase effective next year, with eight employee positions impacted. And at this time, it is recommended that the City Council adopt the memorandum of understanding with the SVPMA as presented. Thank you for your time, this concludes our report, and we're available for questions.
Questions, comments, or motion, Elaine?
I'll make a motion, that's all right. I move to adopt the attached resolution number 2023-12, approving revisions to the current memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Managers Association employees.
Second.
Motion to second, please call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item eight C, adoption of a resolution revising the terms and conditions of employment for management-designated employees. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2023-13, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, establishing terms and conditions of employment for management-designated employees and repealing resolution number 2021-39 and previous resolutions to the extent that they are in conflict here with. And Samantha Argabright is presenting this item.
Good evening, the item before you is the adoption of the resolution revising employee benefits for management-designated employees. You last considered this item during the March 20th, 2023 meeting. The city's employees are divided into the following groups for labor relations purposes. General unit employees, police unit employees, police management employees, confidential management, and management-designated employees. Management-designated employees are not represented by an employee organization. While management-designated employees are not formally represented, staff meets with representatives to better understand interests of employees and to share the city's financial forecasts, as we did with each formal bargaining unit. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, City Council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included recognizing employees' commitment and dedication to the city and provide a compensation increase to increase salary parity with other local jurisdictions to assist with the retention of current employees and recruitment of new employees. Staff has met with representatives from management, and the proposed revisions to their resolution that details employee benefits is before you for consideration. The resolution is for a 27-month term that includes a 10% salary increase over the next two years. A 10% salary increase is similar to what you've already seen this evening with a 6% increase effective April 10th, 2023, a 4% salary increase effective April 8th, 2024. Simi flex amount will remain at the 2023 plan level with no adjustment during the term of the resolution, and approximately 182 employee positions will be impacted. The next slide shows the cost, this information is also available in your staff report. The cost for the agreement for the two years would be $2,63,980.94 across all funds that would be impacted that have management employees in them. And as you can see, this table breaks down the cost for salary as well as the cost for PERS in each year of the agreement. The next slide. In summary, this is a 27-month term from April 10th, 2023 through June 30th, 2025, with a 10% salary increase over the next two years with no changes to Simi Flex, and approximately 182 employee positions will be impacted. As part of state law, Government Code 54953-C3 requires that the City Council orally report in open session a summary of the salary schedules and compensation in the form of benefits for local agency executives before the council can take final action on such an item. Local agency executives are defined as the chief executive officer, a deputy or assistant executive officer, a department head, or a person employed pursuant to an employment agreement. Therefore, should the City Council move to adopt this item, the motion includes an oral report which will need to be read in its entirety by the council member who makes the motion. This concludes staff's report, and we're available for questions.
I'll make the motion if you like. Thank you. I move to adopt a resolution approving revisions to the terms and conditions of employment for management-designated employees. In accordance with Government Code Section 3511.1, a summary of these benefits for the various positions identified below is reported as follows. For the positions of Assistant City Manager, nonconfidential, Deputy City Manager, nonconfidential, City Clerk, Chief of Police, Public Works Director, Environmental Services Director, and Community Services Director, revisions to pay ranges and compensation unless specified under individual contracts are as follows. Effective April 10th, 2023, a 6% cost of living adjustment that includes adjustments to pay ranges will be implemented. Effective April 8th, 2024, a 4% cost of living adjustment that includes adjustments to pay ranges will be implemented. All other prior benefit levels remain the same.
Second.
Motion to second, call for vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item eight D, consideration of consulting arborists, evaluation of eucalyptus trees on Sinaloa Road, and request for direction, and Samantha Argabright is presenting this item.
Good evening, I will not be reading the same report to you again. During the October 24th, 2022 City Council meeting, staff requested authorization to remove the eucalyptus trees on Sinaloa Road as a result of an evaluation completed by a certified arborist in March 2022 and approved the contract for work. The evaluation prepared indicated that most of the 63 eucalyptus trees were infested with leafy insects, and all of the trees had root-balled conditions which could cause them to fail, and recommended that all of the trees be removed. The City Council authorized the work to proceed. During the November 7th, 2022 Council meeting, members of the community expressed concerns about the need to remove all of the trees. The Council requested staff obtain an additional evaluation of the health of the trees by another arborist prior to any of the trees being removed. City Managers Office staff contacted multiple arborists and identified Jan Scout Consulting Arborists LLC as qualified to conduct the assessment. Mr. Scout is a Registered Consulting Arborist, or RCA, a designation provided by the American Society of Consulting Arborists. Registered Consulting Arborists must have additional years of experience, complete an intensive training program, and produce professionally reviewed reports, requirements that can be considered more stringent than those required for becoming a certified arborist. The consultant's evaluations of the eucalyptus trees was conducted over three days in December of 2022. Trees were visually inspected, and evaluation of the potential targets were completed, and a risk assessment was also completed. The components of the visual inspections are included on page two of the staff report. Following the consultant's evaluations of the trees on Sinaloa, they noted 44 blue gum eucalyptus trees, and the previous report had incorrectly identified 11 trees as blue gums that are actually lemon gums. The consultant's report indicates there's no justification for removing any of the lemon gum trees. However, according to the consultant, blue gum eucalyptus trees do have a reputation for failure. The consultant recommended that the immediate removal of 13 eucalyptus trees for reasons ranging from presence of sulfur conch to leaning to damage to the root crown. The consultant's final recommendation stated it would seem prudent to create a plan to remove the remaining blue gums gradually over time and replant more appropriate tree species as these large eucalyptus trees are removed. The consultant did not provide a timeline in the attached report. However, staff did request a timeframe in which the city should consider removing the remaining blue gum eucalyptus trees. The consultant indicated that within a three-to-five-year time period would be reasonable. However, it should be noted that the longer the trees are in place, the more expensive the trees will be to remove, and the liabilities for the trees will continue. Additionally, the report provided a number of recommendations to maintain the health of the trees until tree removal can be completed. The complete report and tree database are included in the City Council's packet, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions from staff?
Well, I might have a question, let me just ask a couple of questions. In the report, originally, it was, there were 66 that were identified, is that right? And then when they did, they basically, they found that there were not 66 anymore, there are 55, I think.
Right, there were a couple that had already been removed, and there were a few trees that the consultant had indicated were misidentified.
Got it, okay. So they evaluated 55 trees, 44 blue gum, 11 are lemon gum. If we change and say, and just remove the 13 trees that they've identified, or they've identified as should be removed immediately, what is the process of doing that? Would we go out and need to get a different, you know?
We currently have a contract with our, with one of our landscape providers that we could include the removal of these eucalyptus trees. However, I believe that the rates that are in there are probably from a year or two ago, I want to say, two years ago.
Two years ago.
As the city manager corrected me. And if we wait for the remaining trees, likely we would be looking at a higher rate as we've been seeing with many of the city's contracts, that the rates for many of the things that we have been purchasing have been increasing. So, we'd be able to get the trees removed under our current agreement.
Under our current agreement, what would the cost be to remove 13 trees? Do we know what that is with the current agreement? Was it identified per tree, or was it for the whole project was X amount?
I think it was a whole, it was a lump sum.
So we can't just take that amount and divide it by,
You could.
Divide it by 55 or 66, and then times it by, I'm going back to my math days.
I think it was $170,000, if I recall from the first report.
So, 170K divided by 66 trees is what they thought they were taking down.
Yeah, let me do some math here.
Roughly $2,500, $2,600 a tree.
And that's at the current rate.
Got it. And with that contract, you're saying that they would probably, it would still be under contract to remove those 13 trees?
Yeah, we've, there was a two, the contract we have is two years, is over two years old. So, they're locked into a two-year-old price. If we were to go out and bid, I'm certain that the cost would be higher. Because we've seen all of our, all of our costs have gone up with, especially in terms of landscaping. It's a labor issue, and that's become a challenge out there. It's likely the cost will go up as we delay.
Got it, okay, but we could put out a bid and just see, I realize we could do that.
Certainly could.
If we wanted to, but I understand, yes, costs are going up just as we've increased pay, we recognize that. Well, I'd like, now that we know that 11 of them are not blue, I learned more about eucalyptus in this report than, you know, than I have ever known. Now that we know that there's lemon gum eucalyptus, who knew? Does that change, I mean, it seemed pretty clear that there was not any need to remove those 11, that they were deemed healthy.
That was, that was the certified arborist's opinion, that there was no need to remove those trees. He did indicate, though, that the blue gum eucalyptus trees do have a reputation for failure. He didn't believe there was any risk with the lemon gum trees.
Got it, no, I understand. And his, actually, the report was very thorough as far as how they could be maintained, for how long, and et cetera. And sulfur conch was something I didn't know about, and what I, regardless of what we do, I would recommend, as this arborist suggested, in early fall, we find out what trees have sulfur conch and take care of them. Okay, so this was, I found this very helpful. Those are my questions for now, obviously, we'll come back to comments and the decision, others ask questions.
So. So, just if I can, on the financial side of things, this is what I'm hearing, make sure that I'm, I'll be right back. So, of the blue gum, the recommendation is between now and three to five years from now, we should have these removed. That if we did them currently, it would be probably considerably cheaper than waiting to do them later. And during the wait time, the city still has the liability and the potential that they fall and do some harm somewhere, and that's on us, that's not on the property owners, it's not, there are trees. Okay, just wanted to make sure I had that.
Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, do we know how much longer the contract is for our current person, current company?
One more year? One more year, yeah. No, that was a wait, yeah. Don't say anything.
I believe the current contract expires at the end of this fiscal year with an option to extend, I believe, an additional one-year period.
Okay.
With perhaps some cost of living increase.
Okay, my concern is the difference between the report we received from our current contractor and the report we received from an outside contractor. It leads to a little bit of mistrust with our current contractor, in my opinion. So, but what I wanted, what I guess my question would be is, is there anything in the current contract that addresses this type of a situation where we are given incorrect information by the contractor? And if we would have followed it, we wouldn't have known we were incorrect. Or we would not have known the information that he supplied to us was wrong. But yet, we would be paying out money. In other words, sometimes in a contract, there's something about false advertising type thing. Is there something along those lines in our contract, do you know? Probably not.
I don't think so, yeah. I would just say, I would argue that, they're not that far off, they're about five years off. I mean, essentially, the initial, the initial agreement, initial contractor said, take them all out now. This, the second one is saying, you should be taking them all out within five years.
And the initial one said there were beetles and bugs, and this one says there's not. And the initial one said there were beetles and bugs, and this one says there's not.
Yeah, we don't know what happened there.
The rain washed them away?
Yeah.
Okay, it just makes me want to question things a little bit further.
Yeah, definitely, there is a disagreement between the due reports.
Okay, thank you.
Just to tag on to that, also the species misrepresentation that would be.
Sorry, I didn't have that too.
Any other comments? Anybody care to make a motion?
Well, I, before, I want to discuss this a little bit more before motion comes forward.
Why ask for comment?
I know, thank you, thank you, Mayor Protem, I appreciate it. As I read the report, basically, a lot of those trees are, the blue gum trees are still quite healthy. It's just that they have a reputation as a species of failing, and, but, I mean, as was pointed out in the report, that they've also weathered through some, a lot of rain and wind, et cetera, of late, and have been successful as well, have stayed, you know, without falling. And I appreciated though, that part of the review was if they were to fall, what they would hit, as I read the report. Depending on where the wind blew, you know, whether it's electrical lines to, to the east or whether it's, you know, homesteads to the west and the distance, et cetera. And so that was all put into this review, which I found, found very interesting. I guess I have a little bit of problem acting on something because we're going to get around to it eventually, and it probably will be cheaper if we do it now, if it means taking out something that is live, that is living and vibrant and would continue to be living and vibrant for a handful more years. I guess, what I'd like to know, we have a contract for two years, and if we just, if we said, okay, let's take out the 13 that we know are questionable and do that immediately, do we need to ask them what they are going to charge us, or do we just know that we can calculate it? Ryan, do we have a sense of that, or?
Well, we'll reach out to our contractor and get a cost for the removal of those 13 trees. The 13 that have been identified by the second arborist, we'll get a cost and move forward on those trees.
Now, the fact that we approved, and I realize we haven't unapproved, the $170,000 to do this through the emergency fund, or what was, was that designation of?
Funding exists.
Yes, so whether we do it this year, whether we do it in two or three years, whether you do it in five years, that funding hasn't been approved, or does that change because we're out of the fiscal year?
No, we can, we can carry over the 170, whatever's not used, we can carry it over into the next year.
Got it. What I was interested, as I looked at the report, it was interesting to me that it wasn't just one clump, it was trees in each of the six segments that was identified, it was not just, and so if we were to remove those, it wouldn't be all of a sudden that we've denuded a section, it would be, I think it'd be less, I don't know, less visually jarring for people to all of a sudden see all those trees gone if we just started with those 13 trees. I think that, at least the conversation I'm hearing with different residents, I'm not, I don't think this initiative is coming from the residents saying, please take them down, I'm feeling that we're in danger. I think we're just being proactive, which is a good thing as a city, it's good to be proactive, don't get me wrong. But I think that the city, that the citizens might be a little alarmed all of a sudden when those trees disappear all at once. I, for one, would love to actually say, let's remove the 13 immediately and phase in the nine excellent recommendations of how to maintain the trees that we have, that are currently there, and then over time, look for the sulfur, whatever that thing's called, sulfur knock, whatever that is, and then reevaluate it every fall, and then take actions based on their health, because these are trees that have truly weathered the storm of time and have been around for a long time, and some are, and some are quite beautiful. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, kind of similar to what you just said. We're supposed to advise staff, right? So my recommendation to staff on this, if we do something, would be to make a plan to remove the 13 trees now, and then a plan to remove and replace the other trees on a ongoing timeframe. One said three to five years, the other one said, the other report said something. So if we could do the ones that are recommended now, because that's kind of a double, both arborists agree on those 13, and then on the remainder of the trees, each year, remove a couple at a time and replace at a time. I think that might be a little bit more visually attractive, it might be a little bit safer, we can take the ones out that are closest to possibly damaging another, a home or a wall, or, you know, that type of a thing. I don't really want to take them all out at once, because, okay, this is bad, but the city did that to my street one time. I came home and every single tree on the street was gone. So I know it can be very, very difficult to look at, but I think if the staff could come, you know, use their expertise, come up with a plan, remove the first 13, and then put the removal of the rest of the ones that we need to remove on a scheduled maintenance plan, something like that, would that work?
What we can certainly do, I just make a suggest, we can take the initial 13 trees down, and in three years, we can do another arborist report. We can certainly do that.
I like that idea.
That would be fine.
Knowing, knowing the liability, I mean, an arborist is only going to give you their opinion.
They're not liable.
Anything can still happen.
Well, do we?
And so we still have that liability out there.
Right, I'd almost rather we do it annually then, is it the cost that high to have somebody review them annually?
No, it was like $5,000.
I'd rather do it annually than, just to.
If that's the council direction, we can certainly do it annually.
That would limit our liability a little bit, if we looked at it?
They fall, they fall.
I know, but at least if we looked at it annually, it wouldn't be, well, you waited three years, well, no.
Well, at the very least, let's look at the sulfur knocks every year, and implement the things that they talked about. I mean, the report is very clear about as far as trimming, and I thought it was complimentary to the city as well, I should say. The report was as far as the pruning that has been going on, so I want to be sure that that we acknowledge the staff, you know, that they've been taking care of things. So I appreciated that as well.
Mr. Fujiwaki's department does a great job. And they've been filling potholes every day, I see them, sorry.
So I think staff has direction.
Well, I had just the devil's advocate on this one, and that is, if the second arborist said, hey, we're looking at three to five years to do that, if in three years from now, a tree falls and does damage and we're liable for it, we're going to look back on this decision and go, wow, that was dumb. Why did, why did we try to save a tree for another two or three years when the recommendation is to take it out? So putting it out there, I like trees too, if we're replacing trees, then that's another factor on the visual of driving down the street.
That's why I was kind of meeting in the middle, do it on an annual basis, take a couple out each. There's no right or wrong, we don't, we don't know what, what weather events could happen.
Well, and any tree can fail, whether it be eucalyptus or.
David's getting nervous.
No, I can chime in to help out just a little bit. Under the law, the idea is that entities will always want to act in a reasonable manner. I actually concur with the idea of council member Kavanaugh on a yearly basis, that's, that's more and above and beyond what's reasonable, quite frankly.
Okay, I think staff has direction.
So do we need a motion? Because this changes what path we had originally approved.
So if I can suggest, we will take out the initial 13 trees, that will leave, of the blue gums, so we're talking about a remaining 43, am I math right? 42.
42.
Yeah, sorry, 42.
Because there's 55 blue.
55, yeah, so there are 42 left, and then we can take those, the rest of those out evenly over a five-year period.
Yeah. That would make, then we can replace.
And we will replace them as we take them out, yeah. I'd love to have a motion on that.
You'd like to have a?
I motion that we, I could do that, so moved.
Second.
There we go.
Motion and second, please call for vote.
I do want to be sure that we are replacing them as they're taken out, that's critical.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 9A, consideration of proposed revisions to the terms and conditions to the memorandum of agreement with the Services Employees International Union, SEIU Local 721, and Assistant City Manager Samantha Argabright is presenting this item.
Good evening, this may sound familiar. The item before you is the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the memorandum of agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local 721, or SEIU. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included recognizing employees' commitment and dedication to the city, and provided a compensation increase to increase salary parity with other local jurisdictions to assist with the retention of current employees and recruitment of new employees. Representative of SEIU worked with the city's negotiating team toward an agreement that would accomplish these goals, and the proposed revisions to their MOU has been for you for consideration. The agreement before you is a resolution for a 26-month term that includes a 10% salary increase over the next two years, a 6% salary increase effective April 24th, 2023, and a 4% salary increase effective April 22nd, 2024, and this increase would impact approximately 252 employees. And I will now briefly review the remaining points of the agreement on the screen. Clarifying language was added regarding union release time for labor negotiations and ratification voting. Positions that the city is currently paying for in Article 16 certificates and licenses were added, effective for the remainder of the plan year for 2023 and plan years 24 and 25. City's CME Flex Benefit will continue the 80/20 cost sharing with SEIU employees for medical premium cost increases, and the job classifications represented by SEIU Local 721 and the classifications eligible for uniforms were updated. This slide shows the total cost for the agreement over the two years would be $1,585,212. This slide also breaks down the cost of each year of the agreement for cost attributed to salary and cost attributed to PERS. In your staff report, you can see each fund broken down and the cost for each fund. The next slide shows the summary again, the 26-month agreement, April 24th, 23 through June 30th, 25, 10% salary increase over the term of the agreement, 6% increase effective April 24th, 2023, 4% increase effective April 22nd, 2024, with approximately 252 employee positions that would be impacted. At this time, it is recommended that the council consider the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the MOA with SEIU as presented, and give the public opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination on the proposed revised MOA and place this matter on the agenda for April 10th for final determination on the proposed MOA. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you for your time, and we're available for questions.
I just wanted to follow up, it dawned on me as I was reading through this report, and by the way, I'm, I'm very gratified that, that these increases are across the board to all of our various unions, and I think it shows working together cohesively as a city, and I really do appreciate that. But my question is, I realize that all of these contracts take effect in April of this year, which is in our current, our current budget cycle, and we didn't budget for that initially last year, that we are going to have this increase. And so I'm trying to understand what that's going to do for the last April, May, June of this fiscally, what that does for our current budget and whether, I mean, just, do we need to pass something, a budget amendment, what does that going to look like for our budget currently?
Based upon the projections we have for the fiscal position of the city at the end of this fiscal year, we would be able to absorb the increases that will happen during this fiscal year.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, there'll be enough, there's enough of a surplus in essence projected?
That's correct.
That we'll be able to, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then just to follow up, and this is a little bit of the questioning that Council Member Rhodes asked at the last council meeting. Going forward, and I've just been doing a quick tally as I sat here, over the two years, I think, maybe, let me, I should ask Ms. Argabright, who could probably tell me the exact amount, over two years, the increase, I think at least the general fund is about 4.5 million, is that?
It's about right.
Does that sound about right? And I recognize, I recognize there's other funds involved too. And in the past, and we pride ourselves on balanced budgets, I think that we've been very good in that regard. Is, is there going to be a need to, are we doing this through increasing revenues or through, or have we had to decrease expenses elsewhere, or where are we absorbing it?
We're absorbing it through, there is, although sales tax is flattening out, so we're not expecting huge increases in sales tax, but there will be a small increase that we're anticipating over the next couple of years. We are also looking at increases in property tax revenue, which is always an 18-month to two-year delay when properties change hands. So we're seeing a significant increase in property, in property tax revenue coming through, as well as managing our expenditures going forward.
Okay, thank you.
I guess it's, it's a question and a comment, so this, this contract represents public works, yeah?
Yes.
And the guys.
More than just public works.
Yeah, but I'm just making sure.
Yes.
Public works is included in this agreement.
And so the team that fills the potholes, they're covered in this, right?
Yes.
Okay, because that particular group with all of the reins has had to do extraordinary work, and Jose and his crew are out there, and I'm, I'm very excited that we can move something forward for them.
Care to make a motion?
Would you, I'll make a motion. Oops, went too far. I move to consider the proposed revisions to the terms and conditions of the memorandum of agreement, the MOA, with general unit employees represented by Service Employees International Union Local 721, SEIU Local 721, as presented, and give the public an opportunity to provide input prior to making a final determination on the MOA and place this matter on the agenda for April 10th, 2023 for final determination on the proposed MOA.
Second.
Motion and second, please call for a vote. I did have this pulled down. I can't vote. Just got that screen up there. There we go, there it is.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 9B, discussion of AB, discussion of AB 1538, what Sushi, in request for direction, and Assistant City Manager Samantha Argabright is presenting this item.
Ms. Argabright is busy.
It was a busy week last week, it was a busy week. During the March 20th, 2023, city council meeting, Council Member Rhodes requested the council discuss AB 1538, a bill sponsored by the Clean Power Alliance, or CPA. AB 1538 would create a financial incentive program for energy providers to secure additional energy for the grid with a goal of increasing reliability and affordability. Currently, if energy providers are unable to or do not obtain the forecasted energy needed, they can be fined by the California Public Utilities Commission. AB 1538 would financially incentivize load serving entities to procure additional clean energy resources for the grid beyond what they are already required to secure for anticipated energy needs. AB 1538 does not define how the financial incentive would be funded, however, staff has been assured it would not be through rate increases. A community choice aggregator such as CPA does not control the electricity distribution lines. Without control of the distribution lines, the additional clean energy procured may not be able to be delivered to CPA's customers if the controlling entity, which is Southern California Edison, deactivates the lines for weather, fire, or heat risk. The city's legislative platform does not take a position on this type of legislation and the action it proposes, therefore, staff requests direction on the city's position on this bill. Council Member Rhodes, as the city's representative to CPA, has additional information he would like to share on this legislation, and I'm available for questions.
We'll let Rocky give his information out, and we have more bases for questions.
All right. So Mayor Protem and City Council, thank you for indulging the rookie up here. Being new to the CPA, trying to figure out and understand completely some of the logic and reasoning and finances of CPA has been a challenge. And I wanted to talk about this legislation as it was going through, so that we can make a clear recommendation, they requested that for next week for their lobbying efforts. I wanted to lay a foundation of how we arrived at today's question. So the CPA does not produce or transmit any electricity, it buys and sells electricity. The CPA's customers are cities like Simi Valley, which choose to participate by giving citizens the ability to choose clean, green energy as opposed to the dirty stuff that SCE provides. The thing is, our citizens don't opt in, they have to opt out if they don't want the CPA's products. The state of California is doing the best The state of California is doing the best it can, as quickly as it can, to eliminate electricity that's produced in these non-clean ways, and so natural gas-fired plants are going offline and not being replaced. So the demand for electricity is increasing, but the ability to produce it is decreasing. So now the state turns to entities like Clean Power Alliance and says, okay, now it's up to you to supply all that green energy. Where is it? The CPA is now contractually obligated to deliver enough energy to the grid when it is needed, and if they don't meet these obligations, they're penalized. And CPA does not build plants, so it really needs new generators to come online quickly. In drafting of the bill, there's an intent to incentivize companies to produce more, which means they'll have to build more. They claim that if there's a new glut of clean energy, that eventually it'll be so substantial that producers will have to compete to sell what they're producing and therefore drive prices for the consumer down. And they also have a premise that energy prices are so high right now because the demand is rising and production is down, and to that, I agree. But this brings us to the question at hand. By taking power generators offline, capacity is down, smaller supply, prices are up, and if prices are up, you would think that those that want to produce green energy would be super excited because it might actually pencil out to build more windmills and solar farms. But apparently, that's not enough incentive, and this bill is going to provide more. The bill gives them a bonus for getting online more quickly. And if my math is right, we're paying more then, because we're giving them incentives, for high-priced energy on the market, and what the bill does not say is where does this bonus money come from? Where are the incentives coming from? CPA says it's not going to come from rate increases, though last month, we voted a rate increase because the cost of energy is high, and we're going to be voting on rate increases here shortly for the next fiscal year. Currently, CPA is losing money on a monthly basis. It's not every month, but with the current state of affairs, they are. The cost of doing business when you have to, these are the costs of doing business when you have to buy high and sell low. CPA needs more, better, and cheaper green energy choices. Now, there's probably a more fundamental problem, that green is actually expensive to produce, and it's risky to produce if the cheap sources remain online because prices could go down, and if you're building power plants that are generating expensive electricity, you might be selling your electricity at a loss. So if we can get rid of all the fossil fuels and therefore the cost of energy will go up, then green could probably be built at a profit. But I don't see a future where greener is ultimately cheaper, or the companies would be doing it right now, they'd be building like crazy. So we don't print money in California, therefore, we're paying for the incentives for energy producers to increase capacity in a market condition where they can sell everything at a high price. I fail to see how incentive will actually get them to build now if they're not building already, and the incentives are real money, and so it'll either be a rate increase or our tax dollars that we send to the state. Either way, the money came out of our pockets. So what to do here today? It is my opinion, and I want to hear others, that supporting a bill that adds cost to the production of energy is the wrong way to get the goal of cleaner energy. I actually believe that the market will evolve towards green naturally, and that entities like CPA, of which Simi Valley is a member, should be focusing on doing two things: creating a more diverse set of blended energy options, including Edison-produced and clean-produced, and then focus lobbying efforts to back the state off of their aggressive schedule to get rid of the fossil fuels so that we can evolve into this new energy lifestyle, the electric lifestyle we want to get into. So there's a couple of options for us to do. We can send a letter that we support this legislation, which I would recommend against. We have the ability to do nothing and not send a letter, or we could actually send a letter that says that this bill is the wrong way to go. And I would like to send that, or use the last option, saying that we don't support this bill, and that also I would like to craft a letter to CPA suggesting some alternate strategies that our city would support and encourage them to go in. That was a lot of information, and thank you for indulging me, but it has taken a lot to get my head around how this whole thing works.
Great. Any questions?
I was just going to comment. Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes, for explaining a lot of that. I remember when we approved the CPA originally, we only did it to 50% when they wanted us to do 100%.
It was 30. We're at 30%.
Oh, we're at 30%. I'm sorry, I erred. So I know, okay, we did, I was thinking 50 was the lowest. We chose the lowest, but then a person could individually go up to 100% if they wished to do so, which I like, because that gives the end user the choice, and I don't want to take choice away from any of our end users.
To that end, that energy level that people are opted into is actually currently cheaper than Edison's.
Okay.
And so we are actually benefiting the city residents.
Right. And I appreciate the detail you went into explaining why the bill is doing what it wants to do, and again, we would be using taxpayer dollars at some point, or ratepayer dollars at some point, to pay for this, and so I'm tending to lean to agree with you in the fact that either oppose or do nothing would be either when I go with the majority of the council. Those are just my comments.
Thank you. So my question, you had, Councilmember Rhodes, and actually, my question is, before you ever made this comment, is they say it won't increase rates, but how can this be assured? You can promise anything, but I don't know that it's guaranteed. But anytime you add projects, batteries, or hydrogen, or whatever, the different things they're talking about, there's cost. But your recommendation is a letter of opposition with recommendations for positive things that we would support. What does that look like? What are those elements that you would recommend?
What are the positive things?
What are the positive things that you are proposing?
So the letter to the CPA, right, so two letters, one opposing the legis, sorry, one that's opposing the legislation, because the CPA is asking us to support it, and so that's one item. The letter to CPA from the city would be encouraging CPA to encourage or lobby for a slowdown in the rate at which we're taking the fossil fuel generators offline, because it's creating a false urgency to go green so fast, and there just simply is not enough generation in the green entity to fulfill it. Not only that, it still has to be delivered once it's produced, and so lobbying for better transmission lines or infrastructure improvement. So if, if nothing else, for lack of a better term, pump the brakes on the aggressiveness of which we're moving. The mandates to be an all-electric vehicle by 2030, 2035, these are things that are simply not going to happen. They're not going to work. It will grind the entire state economy to a halt because it can't happen. They're already complaining at the ports that they can't offload ships with electric trucks because they don't exist yet, and we can't fuel them. So having the CPA work on the city's behalf to say, slow it down, and we will blend in, we'll maybe come up with another tier system, right? We're at 30%. Maybe there's a couple others that can ease people into the green energy market.
Just want to clarify, so that second part would be in support for either opposition or inclusion, when you talk about your recommendations?
Yeah. So the true question here is, do we support the legislation?
Right.
To which I'm saying, no. The second part is, how can we tell Clean Power Alliance what our positive positions are, which is, we want to participate, we want to move in this direction, but you can do it differently for the betterment of the citizens of Simi.
Okay.
Well, I would comment, because this is, both Rocky and I sat in a SCAG meeting where the truckers' union representatives were there and the port union representatives were there, telling us, flat out, that the goals the governor has set down for the electrification of the state are not going to be met by the date that he's mandated. We're living in a fantasy world. The people, if anybody thinks this is true, I'll tell a story, I'll blub it a little bit here. Former Mayor Mashburn and I went to the wind farm field out in Mojave that Clean Power Alliance was touting at the time, because, as DeeDee stated earlier, we agreed to go to the Clean Power Alliance at 30%, allowing our citizens to opt in at a higher rate if they chose. Because of the fact, we were guaranteed a lower rate than Edison, which I'm glad to hear is still there. When we went to that wind farm, we saw several windmills spinning, several, when there was hundreds, and the majority of them weren't. And we asked one of the engineers there, why'd that happen? And he said, well, because the wind's just not hitting it right. And both former Mayor Mashburn and I were stunned by that statement, how can, the one next to it is spinning, how can that one's not spinning? So Mashburn said something to the effect of, well, it doesn't seem very efficient, and the engineer agreed with him, said, no, this isn't efficient at all. So these projects are interesting, they're science, you know, they're kind of a science fact right now, but they're also mostly science fiction. So I would just, it's a long way to say I agree with Rocky's proposal. All right.
Thank you very much.
Allow me. I would move that the city of Simi Valley writes a letter in opposition to the legislation proposed by the Clean Power Alliance, and further that we craft a letter to the Clean Power Alliance suggesting ways in which we think they could benefit the citizens of Simi Valley better.
Second.
Motion, second. Please call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. Next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Thank you very much. I'll start with Councilmember Rhodes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember reports, on Tuesday, March 21st, first, DeeDee and I had interviews for several amazing candidates, but we only got to fill one for the Community Projects Grant Review Committee candidate. On Wednesday, the 22nd, I listened to part of the chamber laugh meeting, but I was commuting from Santa Paula over to here, and it did not go well, but I got some of the legislation there. On Thursday, March 23rd, at the Cultural Arts Foundation Wine Tasting Event, I spent a lot of money on Scoso, and want to thank Four Bricks for providing the event and the wine for that. On Friday, March 24th, the Director of the Samaritan Center and I, and two members from their board, took a field trip to Santa Barbara to see a facility called Dignity Moves, which is some transitional housing that they have in the heart of Santa Barbara, and you would never know it's there. It's completely disguised. We met with the Director of the program and learned some, I think, very innovative ways of dealing with the unhoused population that they have there in their downtown area, and I look forward to working with the Samaritan Center and hopefully contributing some information to the task, the new task force on homelessness, on how we can maybe incorporate some of those things. On Saturday, March 25th, I got to present certificates on behalf of the city to the Elks Installation Dinner, and congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem, for being installed. Monday, March 27th, I got to see the swearing-in ceremony for a transfer officer, Daniel, I hope I say this right, Muyo, and we're very happy to have him join the force. On Thursday, March 30th, another swearing-in, we had four new officers, Drew Quirky, or Quirk, James Mahia, John Grant, and Jason Hafstad, all got sworn in. And I was going to make some joke about April Fool's Day, but I've decided not to, so. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, appreciate it. I was gone quite a bit the last two weeks, but a few of the things that I was able to accomplish on March 21st, attended the youth council meeting, very impressed with our youth council, who had donated and had collected a large quantity of supplies, which they donated to the Seroptimist organization to be used for the Live Your Dream Awards and for the recipients and their families, and I thought that they showed great leadership in that project. On March 22nd, I attended the Veterans Foundation meeting, and they're doing, still got good plans and making, moving forward. On Thursday, March 23rd, I attended VCOG's Admin Committee meeting, and we made plans for our next meeting, and the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Foundation fundraiser was a delight to attend with Councilmember Kavanaugh and Councilmember Rhodes. I, anyway, I was in Idaho with my parents for the weekend, and I am very sorry that I missed the swearing-in of our five new officers, didn't return until after the fact, and I confess, I was in Legoland trying to get back in time for the swearing-in of the four officers on March 30th, but was not successful in getting back in time. But on March 28th, I attended the Rotary Club and appreciated all the efforts of our service organizations, and that included attending the Kiwanis Roundup this Saturday, which was a great fun event. Well done, bravo. As I thought about the manpower to make that successful, I just am amazed at what our service organizations do. I know that Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Judge, and his wife were there working away, and anyway, lots of good work is done here in our community, and it's much, much appreciated. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, whichever. Thank you, Mike. Mine's a short report. So on March 21st, I did the Community Project Grant Review Committee interviews with Councilmember Rocky Rhodes. I think we had so much fun laughing and joking and meeting all those people. Yeah, we just had such a great group, and we said, we're going to do all of the interviews together from now on. I don't think that'll work, but we just really had a great time, and staff had everything organized, and it really went well, and I think we made a good selection. It was a hard choice, but we made a good selection. So that was a lot of fun. I also attended the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Foundation Wine Tasting Event. We were not at the same table, all three of us, so no brown act, you don't have to worry about that, but Councilmember Lister and I were at the same table, and we made four new friends, Sue, Stephanie, Becky, and Alan, so hi out there. We had a great time meeting you and chatting with you, and thank you to Gary and Karen Stewart for Four Bricks wines. Gary did a talk on the wines and how to look, what to look for in them and the taste and how they were, the grapes were grown, I mean, just very, very, he's become an expert in that area. It was very, very amazing. And thank you to Marie Bennett, she's on the foundation board, she made all the centerpieces, and I won the centerpiece at our table, so I was a happy camper. After that, I went on vacation, so I missed the Kiwanis Roundup. I was really looking forward to that, but I was recovering from my vacation, you know how that happens. But for those of you that do celebrate, I want to wish you a happy Easter this weekend. So thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. All right, my report's going to be pretty short. On Thursday, March 23rd, I attended, Janice Parvin's, our new supervisor from Ventura, I attended her town hall meeting on Thursday up at the Elks Lodge. She had a large crowd and a huge amount of county staff to answer questions for the crowd about different items. I thought that was very nice of her to do that, and she plans to do those, I believe, quarterly, and she's going to go around the whole, her whole part of the county and have the events in different places. And she's welcome back to the Elks Lodge anytime. She did a great job. On Monday, March 27th, I'm sorry, I missed that swearing-in. I'm retired, that was pretty early, so. That's, I think I just forgot, it wasn't in my calendar, sorry about that. Wish the new guy luck, I hope he does a great job, and I'm sure he's an outstanding officer. I was able to make the swearing-in of our four new officers, the brand-new officers that have not been anywhere before, and so I'm very happy to see that we're building up our ranks and getting people on the street, making sure that our city remains a safe place. And on Saturday, April 1st, I attended the Roundup, I helped with one of the acts by waving a flag, and my wife served beer. Anyways, it was a great- Anyways, it was a great event. I always look forward to the roundup. I'm sad that it wasn't in Hummingburg, but I think they did a great job having it at the park. And that's the end of my report. Do I do that? Okay. I'm new at this.
You're doing great, Mike.
All righty. So we're on ten B, so any councilmembers would like any future agenda items? Outstanding. All right. So tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of the heinous homicidal tragedy in Nashville, Tennessee, that occurred last week. There's absolutely zero excuse for that. So everybody have a good evening, a good week, and happy Passover two and Easter. See you guys next week.